Okay, I think we still have about twenty seconds left till seven o'clock, so we're all here, but I will wait a couple more seconds just for members of the public to maybe joining. Okay, it is seven o'clock, so I will call the meeting to order. I think we are all here. Schoolhouse is unmuted, I think. Mary Ann, I see you're close to a mic. Do you speak just to make sure we can hear you? Oh, yeah, the the schoolhouse was muted earlier. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't anymore. Okay, I will call the meeting to order then. And Melissa, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Derwin.
Here.
Councilmember Alz.
Here.
Councilmember Richards.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wernicke.
Here.
Mayor Hughes.
Here. Um, okay, report out of closed session. We have a report out of closed session, which brings us to item three oral communications. If any member of the public would like to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, please raise your hands now using this as a hand feature and we will call on you in order and you will be able to speak for up to three minutes on any item that's not on tight agenda. And I see Rita's hand is up. Go ahead, Rita.
Hi, thank you for taking my question. I'm just checking on the past two audits that have not been submitted or finalized yet. And in light of the audit that happened in Palo Alto, there were some real questions about Alta Housing. And, you know, I know they are the ones that put in the proposal or what we're basing Ford Field guidelines on for the fifty units, community center and parking lot. And in light of the audit questions that Palo Alto had concerning Alta Housing, um, will Portola Valley be relooking at that particular contractor or getting an analysis from a different contractor at that location? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next hand I see is Dana Breen. Go ahead. Oh, nope. Do we get? We missed Dana? Hands going up, going down. There we go. Okay, try now, Dana. You need to unmute on your end. No, now you're back over in attendees. I'm not sure what's happening.
For some reason, it's not allowing me to give permission to talk. There she goes.
Okay, I did.
Okay.
There. Go ahead.
Did that work?
Now it's working.
Okay, you guys, I I didn't get a chance to check today to see if the open space acquisition letter that they had written and submitted before five o'clock last Friday had made your packet. It did not make the packet over the weekend. But have you had a chance to see it today? Is it in? Is it in the later packet of things?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, it is in the the latest updated packet.
Okay, because I also know other people that submitted before five o'clock last Friday who were not in the packet. So I just wanted to make sure that you got their communication. Thank you.
Yes, I believe all communications, Melissa, that were received before today at some point in time were are available on the website and have also been made available to the council. Is that correct, Melissa?
Yes, that is correct, Mayor. Any communications that was received before one P M was compiled and that that is from the time the packet was produced until one P M this afternoon. All comments were compiled, sent to the council and placed in two locations on the town website. One is on the events page for tonight's town council. And the other is on the town council webpage. There is a button with an envelope that says correspondence received after packet production or something like that. And to Dana's point, I did want to point out the open space letter is on page eight of that packet. So you can check for that there.
Thank you. Uh, next hand is Carolyn. Go ahead, Carolyn.
I just was hoping that we could continue. I know that our comments are no longer verbatim. Um, but then for a while the town adopted a process where we could see, you know, oral communication and then the minutes on the side. I don't think I saw that this time. So can we implement that again? It's very helpful for people who work and and we have limited time to really go into what we want to look at. Uh, I mean, I was gone for three weeks and now I have to review all the I I I'm sorry, and that's another point. You know, like for the ad hoc housing element, there is a YouTube. So why is that not on the town council website within that committee? That would be helpful because then I would not have to disturb your staff. Melissa was very helpful and and sent it to me, but for me, that was a little too late because I don't have ten hours to review those recordings. It would be helpful to period per committee. Hopefully, all committees get recorded now. All Zoom meetings, all YouTube meetings are on the website. I mean, it 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 makes it so much diff- uh, so much easier for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see no more hands raised from the public.
Mr. Mayor, we have one oral communications here in the chamber.
Okay, thank you.
Liz. Please.
Good evening, Town Council and fellow residents. My name is Liz Bab, and while I serve on the town's Trails and Pass Committee, tonight I'm speaking as a concerned private citizen and resident of Portola Valley. I request that the Town Council, the Bicycle Pedestrian and Traffic Committee and relevant town staff and the appropriate local school staff look into several items relating to safety on our streets. Currently, I believe there are several very dangerous areas for many of us along Alpine Road and Portola Road. Flashing beacons for two crosswalks were approved pre-pandemic for crosswalks at Alpine Hills Tennis Club on Alpine Road and the crosswalk at Woodside Priory on Portola. The town also received a grant covering part of the cost to install the flashing beacons, which will expire at the end of twenty twenty-three, I believe. It's imperative that this project, the flashing beacons, be moved up in priority for the town's Public Works Department, who works so hard to complete our approved projects, and I do thank them profusely. But it is unclear to me why it has taken so long to get these beacons installed. I've asked and I've been told that it was the pandemic's fault. I've also been told that PG&E is the bad guy here, that they're slow. But again, I feel as if these projects were a higher priority than we could apply the appropriate pressure to PG&E to get them moved up in the queue. Currently, we're told the beacons will be installed by the end of June twenty twenty-three. I would like the town council or its representative to get back to the public on whether or not this project timeline could be moved up. So the flashing beacons at both crosswalks, that's number one. Number two is that I think there are several other areas on Alpine and Portola that are dangerous. People constantly drive over the speed limit. So I respectfully request that the Town Council and the BPTS Committee make recommendations on how to slow down traffic on these two routes. I don't know what the answer is. Stop signs, stoplights, God forbid, speed bumps. But recommendations are needed and they should be a top priority. So that's number two for me. Number three, I urge the Town Council to ask the Planning Commission and town staff to come up with requirements for developers working along the Alpine Corridor and Portola Corridor to provide funds for street safety. This might include wa- widening trails or paths along the street to keep pedestrians, equestrians and bikers off the street. This might include additional crosswalks, other solutions. I'm not the expert. I'm asking for a review of those corridors with an eye to road safety when the developer is submitting their application. Because I believe their tenants and or new owners are going to bring more traffic to the two main routes. I'll also be submitting these three subject comments in an email form to both the BPTS Committee as well as the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Um, are there any more in the schoolhouse, Jeremy?
No more, thank you.
Okay, um, then that will bring us to the end of the public comment period. Um, and we will move on to let's see, we have no announcements or presentations, so the consent agenda, item five. Uh, the consent agenda is generally voted on as one action altogether by the council. Um, but before we do that, there's an opportunity for any member of the public to speak to any item on the consent agenda. If you would like to do that, please raise your hand now and you'll be able to speak um, on each item, the consent agenda. Um, and I see Carolyn has her hand up. Go ahead.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, let me go to the other screen. I was hoping to get some clarifications regarding the warrant list. Um, we have, we're not paying, I believe, seven thousand dollars for fears and peers. And so far, we have not seen even a draft of their evacuation routes. I hope we're not going to the same issue that we had last December in two thousand twenty-one when we saw the report by town town staff and 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 there were so many errors in that report. So I was hoping that I mean, we continue to pay them and we have not even seen um, a draft of that study report. Um, and I also wanted to see if if the Town Council could explain to us what the, uh, let's see here. It was the Plan GPA. Which properties are involved? This is a a one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars um, contribution. Um, I assume this is an annual contribution and I was hoping that we could get some light on which properties are included in that um, fund. So yeah, thank you. Oh, and I also would like to understand why we continue to expand this emergency and need, um, COVID. Um, I will address it again under the housing element. If indeed COVID is so serious, then we should address this during the housing because high-density housing is one of the contributors of, you know, the spread of this dangerous um, epidemic. So, thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Jeremy, do you want to speak to the status of the fair and peers contract and plan JPA?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Uh, the, um, fair and peers contract amendment, uh, the the report itself is coming to council on August tenth. Um, we had hoped to bring it tonight. Um, but as we're doing the housing element, we thought it made more sense to bring that a little later and have a meeting where that could be discussed. The contract amendment is discussed within the staff report is related to the housing element and would provide funding to support making a revision to the report uh, for added units in town. And I'm, I apologize, I'm not sure that I understood the question around the JPA issue.
Well, could you describe what Plan JPA is, maybe?
Oh, yeah, they're a pooled, um, risk insurance, uh, organization that many of the smaller cities in the Bay Area participate in, I believe, with about sixty or so. So we pull those resources in order to have um, reasonable rates for insurance on our property.
Thank you. Okay, I see no other hands raised in Zoom. Is there anybody in the schoolhouse who has any comment on the consent agenda? Okay. I'm sorry?
No.
Okay, um, then I'll bring it back to the council. Would anybody like to pull any item on the consent agenda? Nope, then is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Seconded by who was that?
It was me.
It was John.
Oh, John, okay. I should have guessed by seeing nobody else's lips move. Okay. Um, moved by Mary Ann, seconded by John. Melissa, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Derwin.
I.
Councilmember Alz.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernicke.
Hi.
Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to item six, a study session. Um, this will be one of our regular updates from our relatively new town lobbyists on what is going on in Sacramento. Audrey.
Anything, everyone? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, oh, the host will let me start video now. So one moment. Okay, there we are, and hopefully you can see me as well. I was temporarily disabled there, but good evening, everyone. Um, thanks so much for having me today. Um, there's a lot been going on in the Capitol, so since we last talked, so we wanted to start by providing you an overview of where we are just in the legislative process and the schedule and then go up some of the budget agreements, because that's really the latest news. And then at the end, I don't want to be too long, but touch on a couple of bills of importance that we've been following. Um, but the Senate and Assembly, they've been working nonstop throughout May and June to pass the final budget agreement. And they work obviously with the Governor's Office and the Department of Finance. So the main budget bill was ultimately passed in mid-June, um, in order to meet the constitutional deadline um, for the legislature to continue to get paid. But, um, subsequent trailer bills that implemented parts of the budget then came out after that and they were put into print and passed at the end of June. So there's like the one main budget bill, then there was two budget bill juniors which can make um, changes to that that first budget bill, and that's really just like the funding piece of it. But then they'll do these trailer bills on various topics where they, um, put language in of how the funding will actually work. Um, so there were a variety of subjects that had trailer bills. Um, everything ended up passing at the end of June and then the governor signed it thereafter. And we'll provide highlights on that in a second, but I just wanted to set the stage of how the budget process worked this year. Um, so everything got done and the budget is completed with the exception of a climate package. So the final budget agreement, it did allocate nineteen point three billion dollars for a climate package, but that's the only part where a trailer bill hasn't come out yet. So none of those details have been finalized and they're going to be working on that over the July summer recess and then into August. Um, the agreement did indicate that it will be for things like drought, sea level rise, extreme heat, et cetera. But the negotiations are ongoing on what that would look like, but I imagine that within those topics, um, there'll be, I mean, nineteen billion dollars, there's going to be a lot of different um, new programs that are created that we should potentially be eligible for and can apply for on um, a variety of subjects in the climate realm. So that's continuing to be worked on. Um, in terms of timing, they will return from the summer recess on August first. And then when they first get back, they'll do appropriations and fiscal bills for the first two weeks of August, since there's no more, um, policy committee hearings, unless there's some, you know, extreme circumstance or rule waivers, et cetera. But for the most part, it'll be just appropriations bills. And then the final two weeks of August will just be floor session where they work to pass all the bills before the end of the two-year session on August thirty-first. So basically, they come back for that one month sprint and then they'll be completely done at the end of August. Um, the governor then has thirty days to sign or veto any of the bills that get to him then. Um, and then they'll go on break until they come back in January. So I wanted to talk on just a few of the high-profile budget items. You've probably seen some of them in various news articles, but, um, one of the big things that came out where there was potentially contention between the Governor's Office and the legislature, but was on the gas tax relief agreement or some sort of relief funding to go back to taxpayers. Um, what they ended on was a nine point five billion dollar, um, plan that has direct refunds to income taxpayers. And then they set the thresholds of up to two hundred and fifty thousand, et cetera. Um, and then the other big, um, part that was one of the high-profile budget items is the forty-seven billion dollars for infrastructure over four years. So they did fourteen billion for transportation, mostly for rail um, and transit, but I'll talk about that in a second. Um, two billion dollars was put for affordable housing, five hundred and fifty million for broadband, and then a lot of money for libraries. Um, and then another big part was two hundred and fifty million for small businesses and nonprofits to fund supplemental paid sick leave grants. So you might hear from various businesses in the town, um, but they're still working on the eligibility and what that, um, program will look like. But, um, since earlier this year, they implemented the requirement to, um, pay COVID paid sick leave. A lot of small businesses were hurt by having to implement that. Um, so there's going to be a grant program to help offset some of those costs. Um, just in terms of housing and homelessness, um, the HAP program for homelessness, they allocated an additional billion for this year. Um, and then another billion for the following year, so it'll be two billion dollars for HAP. Um, there's five hundred and fifty million for this new program they created called the California Dream for All to help, um, new homebuyers with a down payment. Um, and then there's two hundred and fifty million for affordable homeownership programs, so a lot in the housing space, and, um, I know that's a big deal statewide right now. Um, and then two hundred and fifty million to the Infill Infrastructure Grant Program in this year. Um, and then just in terms of transportation, three billion for transit capital, um, and two or one billion for freight infrastructure in and around ports to help address with the backlog that you probably heard. And then a billion for active transportation. So the focus on the transportation front this year was really there's money for high-speed rail, um, transit, and then, um, like great separations and then the active transportation program, which is really important to the Chair of the Transportation Committee. So that comprised the transportation package, and then we're just all kind of waiting to see what the details of the climate package look like. Um, one really big win that was exciting was the VLF shortfall, um, reimbursement process that if you recall from last time, I mean, there's a long history of the VLF, so I won't go into it all, but, um, where we come over the last couple of months was that the Department of Finance had put forward a proposal that would only impact the County of San Mateo and the County of Napa and all the cities they're in. Um, and basically the VLF shortfall for the county, which was ninety-six million for this year. They said that going forward, you'd have to use your own excess ERAF funds to pay your VLF shortfall before the state reimbursement would kick in. So basically, what that means is whatever your shortfall is, you have to first pay for it with your own money. And then if there's anything additional, then they would help, um, kick in after that. So for the County of San Mateo, it would have been ninety-six million that they'd have to be out this year with the potential of that growing to the hundreds of millions over the next few years. So and then you can imagine that flowing down to all the cities and the towns and the special districts. So horrible, um, proposal and would have been very detrimental to the town. So we were ultimately able to stop that. Um, our, uh, legislators and our delegation were extremely helpful. Assemblymember Mullen, Assemblymember Berman and Senator Becker really stepped up and helped push back on the proposal. Ultimately, the legislature rejected any trailer bill language and they kept our ninety-six million dollar reimbursement in the budget. So that, um, funding will just go as the normal process and, um, we'll be back to the routine way of filing the claim and arrears and, um, yeah, so no trailer billing, which was really exciting and we were, uh, worked really hard on that all year. So that was a big win. Um, I think that's all I have on budget. I'll mention a couple of bills and then obviously if you have any questions, but um, in terms of bills, there, if you remember from last time or over the last two years, there's been a water bond introduced. Um, Assemblymember Eduardo Garcia had one this year and it was a seven billion dollar, um, plan that was in a bill, but ultimately, given the surplus and that they're going to do the climate package, they decided they, you know, are trying to avoid doing new bonding authority when there was a surplus for one-time funds. So the water bond didn't move forward, but I suspect that a lot of that funding will, um, be in the climate package. And I've heard a lot of stuff on drought lately, all just rumors at this point, but there's some speculation about whether potentially mandatory cutbacks could be coming. Right now, as you might know, but everything's been voluntary thus far, but I think the administration's a little bit worried about not hitting conservation goals, and so I think a lot of the climate package will be focused on drought response. Um, and potentially some more, um, more restrictive regulations could be coming. Um, the Berman bill that we mentioned last time was AB twenty-sixty-three that would prohibit local jurisdictions from imposing affordable housing impact fees. Um, that died in the Assembly Appropriations Committee, so it won't move forward. Um, there were two bills, SB twelve ninety-two, which is a stern bill that allowed local governments to restrict development in high-fire severity zones. That did not move forward in the first policy committee. And then there was like a two-week period where it looked like SB twelve was going to be revived, which, if you recall, was the McGuire Bill from last year that would prohibit prohibited any like permit or entitlement in very high-fire severity zones. Um, it didn't make move forward last year, but since it was a two-year bill, when it got to June, it could technically move forward, and so it looked like it was getting set for hearing. They started having conversations, but ultimately the opposition still remained. Um, and the Assembly Housing Committee didn't set the bills. Oh, it didn't end up being set for hearing, but there was a two-week period where the author did try to move it. So I suspect that that is something that will probably come back next year, at least in some modified form. Um, Assemblymember Robert Revis had the bill that would require a city or county's annual housing element to include their progress in meeting housing needs for extremely low-income households. Um, that bill's not moving forward. It's been put on the inactive file. Um, I don't want to mention too many, just for the sake of time, because we provided Jeremy with a full bill list, but I think the one other important one is AB nineteen ninety-four by Assemblymember Lee. It would have allowed members of a local, um, body to use teleconferencing. Um, and then you won't have to make that location, um, known to the public, because you know, if someone's injured or sick but still wants to join their, whatever council or board that they're on. Um, and then they would be able to join from home, but you shouldn't have to disclose your public, your home address to the public, et cetera. But that bill, ultimately, there was a lot of opposition from, um, various open government groups who would like people to be in person. And so the author ended up pulling the bill and, um, it's not moving forward at this time. So I just wanted to mention that one because it impacts pretty much all local governments across the state. And then lastly, one more that is moving is a bill by Senator Dodd, SB eight thirty-three. It requires the Energy Commission to develop a grant program for local jurisdictions to develop community energy resilience plans to address power outages. So, um, there's going to be a grant program and regulations potentially coming on that one, but that one is still moving and very likely to pass. It's been one of Senator Dodd's top priorities this year, so I think there'll be some potential grant funding that we could be eligible for coming down the pipe there, too. So um, there is a full bill list, so there's obviously many, many more on various topics than we try to divide it up by category for them, so it's easier, but, um, just wanted to mention a few, so thank you.
How how big is that last one, the energy grants?
Um, it just requires them to develop a grant program, and I think that the actual amount will be what's in the climate pack. Because a lot of the bills are just kind of implementing the program and saying who will do it. And then the actual amount will be divided up in that nineteen billion. So I think to be determined on how that allocation goes out, but it's been one of his top priorities and it sounds like the administration seems supportive of it. So I suspect that it will be a a good amount to go around, so.
Okay. All right, um, are there any council member questions? No, I don't see any.
Yes, yes, sorry. I'm in person. Um, all right, so are there any bills that would, and perhaps it's the last bill you mentioned, that would offer grants to communities to do microgrids?
Um, I think that could be one that would be an option, and then I'd have to go through the budget in more detail to look up that specifically. But there are a lot of big grant programs that are be- coming out of the climate package, and then also just the other programs like transportation, et cetera. There's going to be a ton of different new programs created. There's the fifty billion dollar surplus this year, so they're trying to figure out how all of those will work and what they'll be eligible for. So just in terms of like dealing with a fifty billion dollar surplus in like two months, they had to kind of just create these larger pots. And then the next couple of months, we'll be figuring out how those will be allocated, who will be the state agency administering them, who will be eligible. So there's going to be a lot of state agencies that have to do a lot of regulations, see what will well, but I can look at that specifically, but at this point, the details on staff for the sake of time and getting out fifty billion dollars, it was like, we're coming to broad agreements. We know rail's a priority, so two billion dollars goes there. Okay, we know, you know, this is a priority for housing, so we have to put, you know, two billion dollars into HAP. So some money went into existing programs, but some of these newer programs, there's not a ton of details yet as as they'll start to work on over the, um, fall.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else? No, is there any public comment on this item? I see Christie's hand up. Go ahead, Christie.
Thank you for the update on the bills. I'm wondering if Jeremy can put the full bill list out so the residents could see it. Is it in this packet? And my second question, and we really do want to read the bills and we are paying the lobbyists for this, so thank you. And, um, SB twelve, if you can go into more detail about the opposition of a wildfire bill uh, concerning, uh, with what's going on in the environment nowadays. Thank you.
Uh, is it okay to respond?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, one of the biggest issues will is the California building industry and a lot of the building groups, because the way that the, they feel that the, um, definition is imposed, there isn't a lot of buildable land already. So it's trying to find the balance between in crisis, but also we build in areas that are not safe. So for them, it's a, it's about finding that middle ground where they can still build, because if you know, like so much of land is already undeveloped or zoned for other things. Um, so eliminating another part in their view, um, was part of their argument is, you know, uh, they can't build houses and we're also in a housing crisis. So a lot of the housing So a lot of the housing advocates were on one side, so.
Thank you. And Jeremy, can you speak to the bill list? I think um we were planning to or maybe did put it in a digest. I don't. Um, I may be remembering the last one, though, as opposed to the latest one.
Uh, yeah, I I will in the future place updated lists in the digest whenever we receive them. We get a couple a year. I'll be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I see no more hands raised on Zoom. Is there anybody in the schoolhouse?
No.
Okay, um, thank you for the update, Audrey, as usual.
There is, I'm sorry, there is one comment.
Okay.
If you have a comment, would you come up to them? Thank you.
Hi, it's Karen Askey, and I'm just curious as to how many uh residents are online in the meeting. Uh, and how many we have here. Usually, Craig, you tell us that, but in the schoolhouse, we can't see it. Thank you.
Sure, there are sixty-seven attendees right now, so non-panelists, members of the public attending online right now. Um, and there is a website, if you have the agenda packet, um, that gives you a live update of, it tells you who all is there and how long they've been in the meeting and so on. Um, if you look on the front page of the agenda packet, and you should be able to pull that up on your phone too, and at the top of that page, it gives you the count. Um, so you can, you can check for yourself now. You don't need to depend on us. Okay, if there are no more uh. Oh, it comments, um, I'd like to thank you, Audrey, for the update. Um, very helpful as usual, and we look forward to seeing you. A little bit later in the season.
We, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and that brings us to item seven A, the big one, review of the draft housing element. Um, and I will turn it over to Laura to walk us through this exciting, I'm sure, very brief item.
Thank you, um, good evening, Mayor, um, members of the council, residents. For anyone that doesn't know me, I'm Laura Russell. I'm the Planning and Building Director. I am joined this evening um by Kara Silver, the town attorney, who's always here but has a special role for the housing element. Dylan Parker, our associate planner, and then the key consultants on the project, Carla Violet from Urban Planning Partner Partners and Curtis Banks. From Urban Planning Partners. So let me go ahead and share my screen with the presentation. And does that look okay to everybody?
Yep, it's good here.
Okay. Um, this is going to be a lengthy presentation. Um, we think that it's warranted, given the importance of this. So I'll do my best to walk you through some key components here, but I appreciate everyone's patience as we work through um this important item. So this is the meeting um format for this evening. Um, if you're new to these kinds of meetings, this is how we normally do it. There's a staff presentation, and I'm gonna go over a couple of key aspects. I'm gonna talk about some background information. Um, this will repeat be repetitive for some of you that have been participating all along, but I know it'll be new to some of you. We're gonna talk about some key components of the draft housing element and some policy questions that have come up during the review process. And then there's additional policy questions for the council to consider. And the next part of the meeting is the council will have an opportunity to ask questions of staff and our consultant team. Then will be the public comment section, followed by the council discussion. So the purpose of the meeting tonight is for us to present the Housing Element Committee and the Planning Commission's recommendations on the draft housing element. The draft housing element has been available for thirty days of public review. And so this is the council's opportunity to receive all of that public comment and provide additional direction to staff. So we're looking to receive comments from the town council with a focus on sections six and seven, which include the uh key policies and the site inventory. And we're also looking for authorization to forward the draft housing element to H C D, which is the State Department of Housing and Community Development. For their ninety-day review. So background, the housing element is a part of the town's general plan. It identifies policies and programs to meet the housing needs of the town's future and current residents. It's updated every eight years under state law, and this particular update covers twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one. This is referred to as the sixth cycle. It's the sixth time cities and towns have done this kind of process. These are the required housing element components that come from state law. We've bolded for you the housing sites inventory, the policies and programs. And the requirement to affirmatively further fair housing called A F F H. These are the three things that we really need to pay kind of the most attention to and make up our housing plan. So we're gonna talk about each of the um housing sites and get into a few policies and programs. But I'd like you to think about this concept of A F F H as running throughout the entire document. So in the past, our obligation in local government was not to discriminate against people, and when we're looking at fair housing considerations. But now our mandate has extended to say that we have to undo the past discrimination and move forward. Um, in terms of uh removing the the legacy of those past actions. And the question that everybody is asking all the time, people ask me, do we really have to do this? Does the town really have to? And these are some of the consequences of not complying with housing element law. There could be a loss of local control, including the court system can appoint a receiver to draft the housing element. Or to take over our land use planning authority. We could have certain projects being approved by right without any kind of local discretionary review. We could have lawsuits or enforcement actions that could be from H C D, from the Attorney General, from housing advocates. Or developers, they could all bring enforcement actions. We could have mandatory attorney's fees that have to be paid, and we could even have the court halt all building permit activity for things as small as remodels and additions. Until the housing element is certified. There can also be financial penalties, um, including up to six hundred thousand dollars per month. We could have a loss of state grant funds and payment of attorney's fees. So as a reminder, this is Portola Valley's Rina, which is our region regional housing needs allocation. So if you're not familiar with this, there's previous reports that update you on how this number comes to the town. When it comes to the town, this is a number that we're required to plan for, and there are different income categories and different numbers of units. And so these income categories are set in state law and everyone uses the same ones and calculates them in the same way. But our numbers vary based on the size of our um jurisdiction and then different factors that include. Um, uh, positive quality of life characteristics. So one of the reasons our number has gone up is not just because of the housing crisis. But because of the very positive quality of life, such as excellent schools um and good health outcomes. Then each county in the state has income levels that are set again by a formula that's standard. And these change every year and they vary by county. So these are the um income levels. Um, so I just point out to give you a sense of what we're talking about. Very low income for a family of four is about ninety-one thousand dollars. Or low income for a family of four is a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And as a reminder, this includes our local workforce that work in education, healthcare, recreation, arts. And government workers, so many of the things that create the region um that is so valuable for all of us to live in. So as the town council is aware, you formed an ad hoc housing element committee. Um, it was formed to provide recommendations to the town council, explore options to minimize the impacts of housing units. Consider safety, maximize public participation, communicate with the different committees and make recommendations. And receive recommendations from residents. The committee includes representatives, two from the town council, two from the planning commission. One from the race and equity committee and one from the architectural and site control commission, and then the remainder are made up of community members. The committee has met thirteen times since August of twenty twenty-one, so at least monthly. Sometimes uh we took a month off for Christmas, but met um twice in a couple of different months. The housing element committee meetings have been extremely well attended. Our typical attendance has been about forty to fifty people, with key meetings having over a hundred and sixty attendees. And for all of you that have been there, you know that these meetings run from three hours till as much as six hours per meeting. Um, other key things in terms of community engagement, we've had two community-wide meetings via Zoom, the first in October and the second in May. After each of those, we produced summaries that were um brought back to the Housing Element Committee for their consideration. And they're um thinking about how to uh balance these different priorities. We've had two meetings of the committee of committees, so this is where we asked everyone who was interested. Um, we have mostly chairs and some vice chairs that have met. These have been great meetings, um staffed by Judy Murphy from the Conservation Committee. And then she has given a report back to the Housing Element Committee after each of those meetings. We've had resident focus groups, we had a survey, we've used the website, social media, and the e-notification system is going out. Over four hundred and fifty subscri- subscribers. So we, excuse me, I have a little residual cough, so sorry if that pops up. So in terms of meeting the town's arena, um, this housing element represents a meaningful change. Everybody agrees, it's a very challenging process. There are stakeholders for and against almost every idea that has come up um in this going-on year-long process. The draft housing element that's before the council is a patchwork approach. And this is where the committee landed to bring together multiple strategies to try to achieve these goals. So there's the sites inventory, which includes the specific locations for additional housing. This is where there would be increased density or changes in zoning. Then there's affiliated housing sites. The um committee supported retention of this program and expansion. There's something new called opt-in upzoning that will allow property owners to develop up to four units per acre as drafted. And then there's eighty news and junior eighty use. So I'm gonna talk about each of these in a little bit more detail and go into some of the policy. Um, questions, the feedback from the committee, the feedback from the planning commission, and some staff analysis. Much of this is included in the staff memo, and so um I'm just gonna touch on some of the key points. Um, I'm not gonna read you all of that language, but if you look at the staff memo, you can see all of that if you're following along there. So first, the sites inventory has been a major undertaking because of the challenges um that we have in town related to. Fire safety, topography, all of the things that you're aware of, geologic safety. The Housing Element Committee held seven meetings on the site inventory, starting back in October. Um, of note, in January, there was a really well-attended and productive meeting on fire safety with guest speakers. We worked on mapping, um, on trying to understand what all of the different physical and safety constraints are in town. And then the uh council will remember that at the end of February, there was a big change in approach. We called it the big pivot is what I called it. There was a lot of new ideas. Um, and so we returned to council for direction on at that point and additional resources. And we regrouped and went back to them in April um and brought new mapping to explore new strategies. And then in May, we continued that at two more meetings. And then finally, in June, um, we review with the uh committee, the planning commission initial feedback. And they discussed the sites again. The information related to all these meetings is available on the website. All of the videos and all of the staff memos and all the presentations are available there. Um, a little bit more background related to affordable housing projects. Um, the council subcommittee and staff met with Alta Housing. This was just a preliminary meeting. We haven't selected Alta to do anything for us. Um, as mentioned in that um oral communications comment, this is just them giving us professional feedback on what's common within their field. They told us that about fifty units is required to make a project feasible from a financial and an operational perspective. They typically provide onsite services. That includes things like after-school programs and. I I wrote encroachment, because I guess I'm always writing um encroachment permits, but I meant enrichment. Um, they do enrichment services, um, support services and community events. Tax credits are a critical source of funding, and so that ends up being the driver oftentimes for the project size and the income levels that can be served. So their typical projects serve residents in the very low-income category. So as a reminder, sixty-four thousand for a single person and about ninety-one thousand for a family of four. This information is substantiated by a twenty-one elements memo that we received. Um, just now in June of twenty twenty-two, they did some research to help us all of us cities and towns out. They reached out to local affordable housing developers to make sure we were using the right assumptions. They agreed that a minimum project size is about fifty units, an ideal being more like eighty to a hundred and twenty. And that local gap financing is typically required in the order of magnitude of that gap financing is around a hundred thousand dollars per unit. So that could be city or town financing or county financing. So this is the constraints map um that it includes the um sites that are in the draft housing element. So this is just an example of many of the maps that the Housing Element Committee considered. To think about all of our different physical and safety constraints in town. So the method of mapping that we did here is we mapped each of them individually, then combined them in a composite map. So the darker gray has more constraints on it. So the physical and safety constraints include flood zones, um, our geologic safety map, including the least stable soil types. Our major major faults, hell fires, very high fire severity zone. Slopes greater than thirty percent, which is an important determination for fire safety risk. And our evacuation mapping that shows parcels with only one point of ingress or egress. So it's important to note that just because there's a hazard doesn't mean that you can't necessarily, you know, doesn't necessarily preclude development. But it depends on the extent of the hazard and the location of the hazard and if how, what kind of development that site is proposed for. So this map shows um the different parts of town, and you can see how the sites were distributed throughout the town. I know in this view, it's a little bit small, but this map is included um in the packet. Um, there is a little mistake in the packet in terms of where Liddura Church is located at the uppermost corner. Um, so there's just a little mistake there, but you can um see this in other places as well and in the um Housing Element Committee online materials. Okay, so I wanted to talk directly about um the proposal. Um, that we've talked about at the Dorothy Field, um, open space and in the baseball park, because there's been a lot of concern about this. So this is the very conceptual plan that was presented to the Housing Element Committee and the Planning Commission. And so we were just exploring what might be possible and whether it'd be feasible to fit approximately fifty units. Um, in the open space portion of the site. And so we had an architectural consultant um do some modeling for us. And this scenario shows that if we maintain the creek buffer. And we maintain the scenic corridor, those are our existing requirements for the buildings. It would be possible to fit a fifty-unit affordable housing complex in this location, generally in the area. Where the two large oak trees are, yeah, in that meadow and um the area behind it. This would also include community open space and a playground um to the north there. You can see in this diagram that the baseball diamond remains, and there is not proposal to develop over the baseball diamond. Um, the ad hoc housing element committee talked about whether we should consider um building housing. Over active recreation facilities, and after kind of going back and forth, they decided not to explore those areas. Um, in conversation at the planning commission meeting, there was language that may have been a little bit confusing to people, but there. I wanna just repeat, there is not a proposal to develop over the baseball diamond. So this just gives the council um kind of a conceptual idea of that first blush, what what might be possible here. This uses about two-point-five acres of the site. The buildings with the um, we call it two and a half stories, so portions would be two stories and portions would be three stories. And this scenario has surface parking. So here's the site summary information um that's in the draft housing element right now, and there's two typos here, sorry. Um, we were moving really quick, um, trying to get this out to the public to take a look at it. So you can see here the different areas of how we're um meeting our arena in this draft. So the Rena numbers are across the top, and then we have pipeline and pending projects. These are defined by state law and best practice. Included in this category is the Willow Commons Development and the proposed not-yet-approved Sanford Faculty Housing Project at the Wedge. Then we have projected A D U development, and that's assigned according to a formula, according to different income categories. We have ninety-two units there, and then the Ford Field Housing Site, that's the open space area again, that's fifty units of very low income. Then there is a vacant property between Roberts and the Willow. Then there is a vacant property between Roberts and the Willow Commons Property. And that one follows. Then there is the Glen Oaks Housing Site. This is where the Equestrian Center is. And then forty-three seventy Alpine Road is kind of the triangular shaped um at Nathwurst and Alpine. And then we have affiliated housing sites. Sequoias has indicated to us that they may be interested in doing a project in the next eight years that would include eighteen senior units and five workforce housing units for their employees. And then Christ Church at the very edge of town. And then um, I'm sorry, I got those mixed up. Christ Church, next door to Town Center, is interested in joining the affiliated housing program and constructing a few units in the parking lot behind the church. And then Ladera Church is at the edge of town. The church is outside of the town limits, but they own a parcel that's inside, and they've long been interested um in considering a project and joining the program. So then you can see the total unit potential at the bottom and the buffer that's in the draft. So um talking about these in a little bit more detail, uh, the affiliated housing program. The committee elected to retain and expand the program. They would like to see details added to the municipal code for clarity. Currently, it's only in the housing element. The new partners would be the Liddara Community Church and Christ Church. And as the council has already indicated, the town itself would become a partner, also for for your previous direction. The proposed changes to the program, um, the two important ones. The program currently only allows employees of that institution to live at the site. So the new version would remove that requirement, but would continue to target the town's workforce. So if you lived at one site, you could work at the other or vice versa. And then the new partners to the affiliated housing program could be added by the town council by resolution after Planning Commission review, instead of all being listed specifically in the housing element itself. So next, we'll talk a little bit about opt-in rezoning, and this is the version that's in the draft housing element right now, the one that's published. So this is a new program that would allow property owners to upzone up to four units per acre if their lot is one acre or greater in size. And would meet the safety criteria that we've outlined here. So the Planning Commission would decide whether it meets the safety criteria. It would have to be accessible to two ways of ingress or egress, so not at a dead end where there's only one way in or out. Located on the slope of less than thirty percent. Outside of a very high fire severity zone, as may be adopted in the future by town council, because we know new maps are forthcoming. Have to be outside of a fault zone and outside of areas identified with unstable soils um or other geologic risks as established by our by our mapping. So then we would have, the basic concept would be in the housing element. And then the specific criteria would be in the municipal code that would adopt um that we would adopt with the housing element. So the Planning Commission would review it first to see if it meets the safety criteria. Then the ASCC would review those projects for objective standards. And we would be proposing um a sunset or a limitation on this program. So I've got a couple of diagrams um to show. These are just examples. So we took just a one-point-six acre site. We thought about what might be possible um in this scenario, doing the four units per acre. So that results in six units on the site. This is an example of little um kind of smaller houses or cottages that are clustered together for um a co-op or for multi-generational housing. In this case, they have a shared carport across the back. They have a fire truck turnaround. This scenario shows um all thirty-foot side and rear setbacks. And front setbacks consistent with our normal front setback. This is another example in the same example lot. This shows three duplexes. Um, shared garden or play area, a shared access drive. So this, in this example, all the duplexes would be two stories. So this also gives you a sense of what might be possible um in that rezoning program. Through the discussion, there's been um questions and concerns about how it could be restricted or whether this program would fit in with the community. So here's some things for the council to consider. Um, we could further restrict the opt-in program than what's in the draft right now. For example, we could um say that there could be four to six units in one building that looks like a large, single-family home. So instead of looking like, instead of being one big house, it could be multiple units. We could require smaller units, um, kind of cottage-style that comply with the thirty-foot setbacks. We could um create a stronger connection to the building form that's in town. There's um planning concepts called missing middle that I think people heard about, so that we could blend those in with existing single-family homes. We could limit the total number of units on site. So for example, we could do four units per acre with the maximum of six or some other number that the um council thought was appropriate. And we could more strongly emphasize the variety of housing types that the community would like to see, such as multi-generational retirement or co-op. Then there's been a suggestion that maybe the town doesn't do that at all, and um maybe it's better to just emphasize SB nine instead. And so staff um looked at that to prepare an alternative where we remove the opt-in program and add a small number of SB nine units. And then just reduce the buffer for above moderate income um with that approach. So this is just a quick reminder of what SB nine does if there's not a lot split. If you have a primary house that's limited by the adjusted maximum floor area. Um, and then you may include, you can have, the resident can have a five-hundred-square-foot junior ADU. And then you can build an ADU that's new and detached, and it can't exceed floor area by eight-hundred square feet. And that can have four-foot side and rear setbacks. Then you can also have a new SB nine unit attached or detached. Can also exceed adjusted maximum floor area by eight-hundred square feet and can also have four-foot setbacks. So this is what the table looks like um if the council um wanted to use SB nine instead. Just removing the opt-in zoning and adding SB nine and letting the buffer reduce a little bit. Or um, you know, we could talk about how far we could take the SB nine units, but we don't want to um suggest too many because there's not a strong rationale for us to do that with HCD. So here's some more information about the opt-in rezoning and our analysis. There has been some concerns about that. Um, but we could, I wanted to emphasize, include requirements that the owner live on site through this program. It is a way to distribute some units throughout the community. And it could provide an alternative um type of housing units for residents that wish to stay in the community or move to the community but don't want to live in a large, single-family detached dwelling unit. So the Housing Element Committee is strongly preferred to maintain the opt-in approach. Um, they took a vote on it as opposed to SB nine. They said that they thought it provided more local control and enabled more units to be dispersed throughout town, which was a priority that had been indicated by the community. The Planning Commission recommendation was different. Their consensus was to remove the opt-in approach and replace it with SB nine. They thought it would take a lot of effort to implement this, and there were concerns about what the parameters, what the limits would be. But there was some interest in keeping a version of this if it was more like with the Planning Commission Subcommittee um uh recommended. And we'll talk about that a little bit more, but kind of stronger limitations too. So now I'm gonna um shift to ADU and junior ADU allocation and production. And so the policy question here was about ADU allocation and whether additional ADUs should be included in our projection. So it was kind of a two-part question. So related to allocation, how do we decide what income category to put them in? We are basing um the draft housing element on the guidance memo from Twenty-One Elements and from A-BAG, which is our Regional Association of Governments. And that's to put thirty percent in very low, thirty percent in low, thirty percent in moderate, and ten percent in above moderate. This is consistent with what the other small towns in the county are doing. If the town doesn't use the safe harbor allocation, then we would have to produce our own rationale, and that would have to be based on evidence. So some additional staff analysis on this topic. Um, HCD has um a method for how you're supposed to project ADUs and junior ADUs, and it's based on building permits issued in the last few years. If you're proposing something different, you have to have a methodology and a justification. So town staff met with HCD staff, and we talked to them about the ninety-two number um that's in the draft housing element. And they recommended additional incentives. They didn't say it wasn't possible, but they said that we needed strong support for it. Looking at our past um three and five-year averages. So they asked for um incentives that would be automatically triggered if we're not meeting our targets. So we made changes to Program seven dash six and seven dash seven in response to that recommendation, and that's included in the draft. The council will also recall that during the twenty-twenty-one code amendments related to ADUs, there were significant concerns about the four-foot setbacks and fire safety and local control. We also wanted to point out, um, the town council is aware, but not all residents maybe, that we have received correspondence from HCD about our town restrictions that have been established for fire safety. And so our local requirements may not pass HCD review as we have them adopted. So we have responded to HCD and will work with them to explain our policies and involve the fire district. But it could result in a reduction of local control for ADUs that have reduced setbacks. So the Housing Element Committee recommendation on this topic. Um, they were unanimous in rejecting the concept of using ADUs and JADUs to achieve the town's very low-income category. They did not think it would be viable approach with HCD, and they didn't think it was an appropriate way for the town to meet its obligations. The committee was split on a smaller increase to ADUs and JADUs. And that they requested that they be evaluated separately, so to kind of have different line items for ADUs and JADUs, since they have different characteristics, different impacts, and different costs. The Planning Commission recommendation um was a little bit different. They supported increasing the ADU and the JADU production um uh and breaking out the JADUs and ADUs as separate. They suggested we could have a really aggressive marketing plan and additional incentives to promote more development. Then there were two commissioners that did not support increasing the numbers, said we didn't have enough historical um data. And they had concerns that even if those units got built, they wouldn't necessarily be rented or otherwise made available to lower-income people. So I'm going to shift now to just hit on a couple of key policies that I wanted to bring to the council's attention. Um, these represent some of the biggest changes um from past policies that the town has had. So first of all, the draft housing element creates two new zoning districts that would allow multifamily housing. As you're aware, this would be the first time in the town's history that we would have zoning to allow multifamily. This is Program one-dash-one. So there would be a twenty-unit-per-acre density that would be applied to two sites, the vacant property um next to Roberts and the open space at Ford Field that we've been discussing. And then there's an eight-units-per-acre density that's applied to the Glen Oaks property. The the plan also creates a new mixed-use residential zoning district, again, the first time in the town's history, allowing six units per acre. That's Program one-dash-two. And that is applied to the triangular-shaped lot at Alpine and Nathwurst. Next, um, policy of note is to pursue the project we've been discussing at Dorothy Field Dorothy Ford Field and Open Space with an affordable housing developer. And we would um issue, it's kind of like a request for proposals process that you go through to find an affordable housing developer to partner with. And then um to to review our standards, our development standards and our process to review uncertainty, to reduce uncertainty in the development process, because we know this is one of the big constraints to housing development um in the region and in the state. And then along with that, we'd be updating all of our standards and and handouts. We'd be continuously updating our staffing pattern and our fees, which we've already started to do that work, as the council is aware. And then the next bunch of policies of note are related to wildfire resiliency. We've modeled these on the best practices um that we've learned even outside of our region, including Paradise and our um really valuable consultant team. So the first one is to review our building code every three years. When we do our normal code update, we would review our home hardening aspects of it, so that would be refreshed every three years. To update our landscaping regulations um with a fresh look through for fire safety in conjunction with our Conservation Committee. To review and adopt as appropriate the fire hazard maps um that we expect to be produced from Cal Fire and/or the Woodside Fire Protection District. And then the language here is to look at the ADU and the SB nine ordinances and look at the fire hazard maps and see if any changes um need to be made to those two ordinances in light of those maps. So now is the next um transition in my very long presentation. We're going to talk about a few other policy questions um for the council's consideration. So we've gone through what are the big things that are in the plan, talked about those. Now we're going to talk about other policy questions um and what the committee and the Planning Commission had to say about them. So first is the recommended buffer and the no-nat-loss um law. So this is complicated, but it basically is, why do we need this buffer? Why does it need to be so big? Um, so we provide a memo um with the staff report, but there's this law that says that we have to have sufficient adequate sites available at all times. And we have to replenish those sites if sites are developed with fewer units or if they're developed for a higher income um level than what we assumed in the plan. So if we receive a development proposal, we have to look at it and compare it to the assumptions in the housing element. And if we have a shortfall, then we have to identify other sites. And we'd have to rezone to accommodate the sites within a hundred and eighty days. So that's a big burden um to to move through. So the Housing Element Committee talked about this quite a bit. Um, there's guidance that comes from the state that recommends a buffer between fifteen percent and thirty percent. And the the committee went back and forth and talked about it a lot. Um, they were split on lowering the buffer for certain categories versus maintaining it for all categories. Planning Commission was also split on this. Two commissioners supported lowering it, um particularly for units that are proposed on town-owned land. Um, one commissioner felt that no buffer was needed, but also pointed out that South West Hills had a buffer of fifteen percent. Um, another suggested to keep the twenty percent buffer except for units on the town-owned land, and the commissioner suggested lowering moderate income category. So you can see that the recommendations here were kind of um very disparate. There wasn't a lot of consensus on this item. It's a really challenging one. Next, um, turning to the legal status of Dorothy Ford Field and the open space. And so um the question that came up here is we had Susan Ford Dorsey, who is the widow of Thomas Ford, um, came to one of our meetings and said he had dedicated Ford Field site to the town on two conditions, that the property be retained as open space and the field be named after his mother, Dorothy Ford. And so staff did analysis on this, um, and staff and the vice mayor met with Ms. Ford Dorsey. And what we've confirmed is the town purchased the property from another party. Um, we do understand that funding did come from Tom Ford for that, from Thomas Ford. The title report shows that there's no open space restrictions, except there are two deed restrictions related to state grant money for the baseball field. So those are only related to the field, not the open space of the site. Um, we do think that it may be possible to negotiate with the state related to the exact location of those deed restrictions, should we need to in the future. Also of note, the town has control over that site. Um, the town owns it, so the town can determine the density um and work with the design with an affordable housing developer. So the town could restrict um the uses there and the number of units and would not have to use state density bonus if it did not wish to. So the Housing Element Committee, um, a majority of them supported affordable housing at this site. And they based it on the conclusion it was the only realistic path to get the number of very low-income units that were needed. The only other option was increasing density in the Nathwurst Triangle area, and that was strongly opposed by the neighbors. So it, they also supported preservation of the primary oak trees at that site if at all possible. In terms of the Planning Commission, um, we'll get into that in more in more detail here. So there were two planning commissioners that talked about the idea of what they called a sunrise provision for the Dorothy Ford Field and Open Space Site. And so they described the sunrise provisions where the town would strongly emphasize ADUs and junior ADUs in the first two years of the housing element, and then decide if and how this site should be developed. So a subcommittee of the Planning Commission was formed, so Commissioners Targ and Taylor prepared a colleague's memo for consideration. That's attached to the council's staff report. These are some key conclusions from the memo. They wanted to They wanted to enhance ADU and JADU education and incentives, reevaluate affordability distribution of JADUs. They wanted to, um, encourage a very carefully crafted voluntary upzoning program, um, that preserved and enhanced, um, the values. They described this differently, um, as being much more discretionary, um, by the planning commission than the version that's in the draft housing element currently. They also talked about a new gateway land use designation that would include Dorothy Ford Field and Ladera Church, both sites, and use that as a contingent, they called it a backstop alternative, if the town is not meeting its RINA. So here's some of the staff analysis, um, on, on that proposal. So staff finds that it would be challenging to provide a rationale to HCD to support even more ADUs and junior ADUs, um, based on the feedback that we've already received from them and from the, um, the formula that they put forward to calculate it. We also have several programs that already provide incentives that are included in section seven. We do think that planning for the Ford Field and Open Space together with the Ladera Church as a gateway district is feasible and could potentially lead to a better result overall. The gateway district could be established within the housing element itself, included permitted uses like the open space, the recreation and the affordable housing, and we could limit the exact number of housing units that could be allowed. Then the whole area could be planned together with the potential for collaboration with Ladera Church and an affordable housing developer. We do think to achieve that RINA credit, um, HCD would likely require that the new land use classification be established, and that there would be a concrete plan at the beginning of the eight year cycle for how this would work. Um, you know, what, what would, uh, timing be like for development of the site? So in response to all of this feedback, um, that we got, staff did a very preliminary site analysis with our consultant team, and we concluded that it may, may be possible to, um, meet multiple objectives here. So to preserve the two oak trees and a portion of the meadow, um, in front of them, kind of that primary open space area, reconfigure the baseball diamond and the parking lot associated with it, and underground the parking. And we're assuming that fundraising would have to be done to help pay those project costs, or we'd have to get funding from other sources. We did hear from a number of residents that they were willing, um, to fundraise to preserve some of the most important elements, um, of the community and meet our housing obligations. But we realized there's a lot of elements that we would need to consider, lots of potential issues. So on the big picture and on the policy side, this would depend on significant fundraising or other funding. So our quick back of the envelope number puts that, um, at six million dollars or more would be necessary um, to move forward with this kind of project due to the very high cost of underground parking. We need to have a, a community conversation about what part of the open space is most important to preserve. So what's most valuable? We all agree open space, but what part of the open space, what view, what trees? Um, we need to talk about what's an appropriate encroachment in the scenic corridor. Right now, the baseball diamond is well into the scenic corridor. Is that acceptable? Could other things be in or out? Does it matter? Um, what are the priorities? What building heights are appropriate? If they're taller, that obviously makes it easier to fit. And what about the privacy and separation between the buildings and the uses of the space recreation and affordable housing? On the technical side, questions are like, can the baseball facility be improved through the process? There's already discussions about adding bathrooms. How can it also be better and better serve that, um, the, the residents that use it all the time? We really need to consider the flood plain and the creek setbacks. This is a challenging site due to the creek location. As always, fire truck access, site circulation, um, shared use space for the residents, and then just the viability, um, in the impacts of underground parking, construction impacts, financial impact, circulation challenges. And then there could be impacts for a nonprofit developer by us doing such a complex project. And then a project of the scale would require additional SEQA analysis. So we'd have to look at the cost and the time associated with an environmental review. So staff presents this option for council's consideration. Um, it would be feasible, we think, to spend the first year or two of the housing element planning period evaluating the feasibility of that site overall, with the aim of preserving the open space to the maximum extent feasible. We'd look at the policy and the big picture questions, have professional experts evaluate the technical questions, consider how the baseball diamond facilities could be improved, and then also assess the feasibility of fundraising and funding in general. So when we talked about this, um, with the committee and with the commission, um, you know, when we talked about it with the committee, they didn't have the benefit of the planning commission's detailed discussion yet, because it hadn't been fully developed. But from what they heard, they were concerned about the sunrise approach. Um, they were afraid it was kind of kicking the can, that it would delay negative community impacts or could add confusion or complexity. The planning commission, um, talked a lot about all of these issues, and I hope you had the opportunity to review the transcript or the Zoom recording, um, because it was really, um, detailed and important nuanced conversation there. But to try to summarize, um, three commissioners supported the sunrise program and adding the gateway district, um, including both of the sites. And in that scenario, development would not be, begin until, for example, January twenty twenty five. And then they wanted to monitor the town's progress with achieving RINA. And then the number of sites could be adjusted, they were assuming could be adjusted down based on the number of units necessary, um, still at that point. They talked about the importance of maintaining a gateway feeling along Alpine Road, um, and that if new development were to occur, it should preserve the two oak trees, the baseball field, those were important priorities of feasible. And then the larger area could be, um, used to really make the most out of everything. Uh, continuing on the planning commission discussion, um, planning commissioners expressed concern, um, that it would add another layer of complexity to an already time sensitive process. Um, there was concern that potential development or reconfiguration of the baseball field had not been discussed with the community before. Uh, and then, uh, Ms. Ford Dorsey herself expressed strong concern about impacts to the baseball field based on her experience, um, with her husband and their previous, um, donation. And then at the very end of that conversation, there was consensus from the planning commission that it would be okay to wait to develop the site for a couple of years, um, into the eight year cycle to achieve the best possible result. So there was consensus on that, um, point in there, oh, about midnight. Um, but we've, we've got those timestamps, um, if you wanted to take a listen to those. Okay, so next, we're going to talk a little bit about the Glen Oaks Equestrian Site. And the policy issue here is that the Housing Element Committee meeting, there was consensus to preserve the equestrian use if it was possible, um, noting the equestrian, equestrian character of the town be important, um, to its history and its roots, and they also wanted to mitigate some of the density along Alpine Road. So from a staff point of view, if that site is removed, then council would need to consider substantially greater opt-in program or other significant measures to make up for that loss of twenty nine units. The planning commission was split on this one as well. Um, three commissioners agreed that Glen Oaks site, site should be added to the sunrise program and be developed only as a last resort. Um, they suggested another dialogue in Stanford to see if there was interest in keeping the equestrian facility and developing houses, housing for workers through the affiliated housing program. And then two planning commissioners supported keeping the site in the inventory because they did not know of any other replacement for those twenty nine units. Um, the council is probably aware that Stanford did submit a comment letter, which was included in your packet. And, um, and doing my best to summarize that, um, they did not think, um, that they could support, uh, actual big housing project along with the equestrian use being located both at the same site, um, that it wouldn't work, that it wasn't feasible for them to do that. We do have a Stanford representative, um, here, so if you had, um, in the audience, if you had any questions, they may be able to answer them. I did have a very brief follow-up conversation with a Stanford representative who said if there was a proposal from the LEC, the operator of the, um, horse facility for affiliated housing, then they would consider that through their process. Um, so we're trying to separating those two ideas of a small number of units for affiliated housing by the LEC compared to a larger development project, uh, pursued by Stanford University itself. So, um, I think almost last, uh, general plan and consistency. This is just to, uh, bring an issue full circle that the planning commission raised. So they asked about consistency with other elements of the general plan and how that works. Um, so the council's probably, um, recalls that when we set, set off on this endeavor, we knew we would have to update some other elements of the general plan, certainly the land use element and the map. Um, based on where the, um, project is so far in our process, we probably have to update the, um, Alpine and Portola Road corridor plans, um, look at the transportation plan. Uh, we have other elements that we would need to look at. Uh, this is very common practice as part of a housing element update. So what we'll do is our technical team will review the general plan and identify areas that are inconsistent with the draft housing element, and we create an annotated document. And then we're proposing to take that to the committee of committees to review those areas so that they could provide their feedback on how those things could be addressed. Then that will go to planning commission for review, and all of this would be packaged together per town council's previous, um, direction with the housing element, the zoning amendments and the environmental review. So to, um, kind of wrap up what we're looking for from the council's discussion, there are key policy points that we'd appreciate your feedback on. The opt-in rezoning program, the buffer, ADU and JADU production, the sunrise programs or sites, and the Glen Oaks site. Of course, all of your other comments are welcome. If you have small detailed comments like typos or minor mistakes, we'd be happy to take those, um, offline if council prefers to do that, um, to save everyone's time. So next steps, based on town council's direction, staff and the consultants will incorporate edits into the draft housing element, and we'll send those to HCD for initial review. Based on the timeline we're on right now, we expect the comments to come back from HCD in writing in mid to late October of twenty twenty two. We have the benefit now of one of the cities in San Mateo County, Redwood City, has completed this step. So they've received comments back from HCD, so we have a sense of what to expect now. So this is hot off the presses, they got comments back last Friday, and we met with twenty one elements on Monday to discuss this. So what we can expect is to have a phone call with HCD midway into the ninety day review, when they will have actually completed most of their review. And we heard that that's a very detailed conversation. So there's some back and forth, there's discussion, they ask questions, they give detailed comments. And there may be a chance to explain some things to them so that we don't get written comments back on everything. Then, um, we expect probably the full ninety days, like on the ninetieth day, we'll get a written letter back, and that's the mid to late October date. So we'll get those comments back, we'll have a sense of what they are though, um, in the middle of the comment period. And then staff and the consultant team will be updating the draft. We'll be working with the Housing Element Committee again, we'll be getting some more public feedback, and then we'll move towards formal adoption of the housing element in the second round, um, submittal, depending on how we're doing on all of that. And then the summer, staff and the consultant team will start working on zoning code amendments. Um, we have a consultant lined up to do that. We'll be bringing the formal contract forward to council soon. Um, but we, um, know who we're going to be working with, they've already been selected. So once we have those, um, basics of the zoning code amendments, they'll go through the ad hoc housing element committee first to make sure they're consistent conceptually with what the committee expected, then go to planning commission for fine tuning, of course, ultimately to council for approval. We've begun our SEQA analysis under the California Environmental Quality Act. We're working on an initial study mitigated negative declaration, which is the IS slash MND, and we expect that to be available in this late summer of twenty twenty two. So that finally concludes, um, my presentation. I'm very happy to receive questions, um, do the best that I can to answer them. We have our full team. Um, we also have the questions that are in the staff memo, if the council finds them helpful, um, later to have those on the screen. So, um, that wraps it up, and thank you very much for your time and attention.
Okay, thank you very much, Laura. That was, um, a lot of information and very clearly presented. Um, so, uh, let us go with council questions. Does anybody on the council have questions for Laura?
I do.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I'm interested in the, in the, uh, opt-in program, and wondered if, uh, it seems that it would be possible to have a little more control than, than the FD nine, uh, alternative. I, wondering if it would be, it'd be possible to have a measure, uh, that would require buy-in from immediate neighbors?
Um, I, I'm not sure, I heard you just say to require buy-in from the immediate neighbors?
Yeah, that's a acceptance of the, of whatever project might be suggested.
Um, we haven't thought about it in those terms. Um, one of the important distinguishing, um, questions for the opt-in program is whether it would be, um, if you meet the criteria for opting into the program, it's automatically approved. So kind of if you meet the criteria you're in, compared to a more discretionary process, that would, um, include more judgment. And so in terms of receiving neighbor feedback, that would definitely go onto the discretionary side. Um, and I think it would be, my immediate reaction is it would be challenging to create the criteria um, that could be fairly applied to all projects that would allow for, um, neighbors to have that much of a say. Um, I'm interested, um, in Kara's opinion on this as well.
Yeah, I, I agree, Laura. I think, I think we'd have to analyze it. It's, it would be a difficult, um, proposition or sort of program, I think, to, um, to adopt and, and draft.
Thank you.
Anything else, John?
Not, not at the moment.
Okay, anyone else? Jeff?
Thanks. I have a few. Um, so you mentioned the change to the affiliated housing program and how the affiliates could now um, offer housing outside of their own employees. Would an affiliate still be allowed? I'm thinking specifically of the priori, but it would be anyone. Would they still be allowed to show preference for their own employees? In, in, with that change to the program?
Yes, um, they would. We would want to leave them to have control because it's their own site. It would just give them the option, um, to rent to others.
It makes a lot more sense for like Ladera Church, obviously, is probably not going to, would be, but, um, and then I, just thinking about that as you were talking, I, um, do the, do, does, you know, does, as an example, does priori prefer, preferring its own employees? Does that run into any troubles with AFFH?
Um, we have to think it through because it's different than, um, the town establishing a preference program for development projects. So we have, it have to be carefully considered, um, because we want to make sure that they can still build, um, communities that are appropriate to them without violating any um, fair housing regulations or be inconsistent with AFFH.
It would be a bigger question probably for the Ladera project, if that were to go, or the Ladera Church project, if that were to go forward, I assume. Okay.
Yeah, we have different situations for our different affiliated housing partners.
Yes.
Right? So, um, I suspect that priori would want to maintain primarily its own employees, but we've heard from priori that, for example, their custodial services are not their direct employees. They're contracted, so they can't live there, but Ladera Church wants to be able to rent to other people. Um, you know, Sequoia's probably wants to rent to their own workers, but might be open to You know, Sequoia's probably wants to rent to their own workers, but might be open to different workers living in different sites.
Yeah, okay. My next one, you know, these the examples you showed that, you know, the six units and a four unit per acre opt-in. If if somebody in town just wanted to do this right now or without any change to the if we didn't do this, is there any mechanism? I mean, could they force us to accept some sort of like a, you know, a basically a PUD on a single site that's currently sound single? I mean, is there absolutely no way for that to happen now? Or could somebody or or in their future, will they be able to? Could somebody just basically sue us and force us to accept a multifamily? Like, you know, a zoning of that kind of scale, like six units per acre?
The only mechanism for that would be through SB nine. And the limits that are on SB nine. So the way our PUD ordinance is written, it's you can't really apply it to a single site because there is a minimum size requirement. And the planning commission has to make a specific finding to waive that requirement. So I don't think there's any other way to achieve something similar.
Okay. And I think that's the only questions I have right now. There'll be others that I'll probably have after after we hear all the comments, but I think that's all I have right now. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. Sarah?
First, I just want to say it's nice to see so many people in the schoolhouse. I really wish I could be there tonight. But I am traveling with my family. So thank you to everybody in attendance and everybody on Zoom. I have three questions. The first one, Laura, is with respect to ADUs, JADUs. I just want to clarify, there's been so much interest particularly in JADUs. From HCD's point of view, my understanding is they don't differentiate. Their their trajectory is based on the combined. Is that true?
That's correct. So HCD is one type of housing unit, ADU and JADU.
Okay, I I still think for our purposes, for our town, I think it's a great idea to separate it. But I just want to clarify that from for this purpose, for the housing element, HCD doesn't differentiate those numbers. The other one, and my next question, I wish I had asked this going through the housing element committee process relates to the safe harbor. One thing that I find so frustrating about when we're trying to you know, look at the numbers in a really detailed way and with ADUs is this requirement of the breakdown thirty 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 ten. And you mentioned that if we are going to break that, we would need to, you know, provide the rationale and the evidence. And I guess one, you know, as as I've said, I am, you know, definitely open to a higher number than we are on ADUs for the moderate and above moderate. But it's hard when you're, as you know, when you're doing the numbers to do that on the ten, you know, that's basically the ten bucket without the impact to, you know, the low and very low. And so what would be required to, like, if we wanted to increase just at the moderate and above moderate? What kind of evidence would we need to provide to break that? Segmenting that they're requiring.
I think we would probably have to have a detailed analysis of our own local conditions and how ADUs are being used. Either by us directly or by us in similar communities. So I think we would have to have data to support it. That data could potentially be collected through surveying existing ADU owners and seeing how they're using their ADUs. There has been discussion about this in the past. And there is a program in the housing element per the committee's discussion early on about this to survey our ADU owners moving forward with this housing element cycle to develop that kind of information and evidence locally. It's very hard to to do that locally because our numbers are small and so it's hard to make them statistically interesting. But I have had some conversations with the other small towns in the county that have similar characteristics to see if we maybe wanted to do some surveys together so that we could have more data to pull from.
Mm-hmm, okay. And then the last question relates to the potential for an affordable housing project and what that process would look like. So if we were to do one, you know, I know we've had some preliminary conversations with Alta Housing and others. But if you could describe, you know, what the actual process looks like if we were to go that route, I don't want people to think that there's already been a developer identified and all of that. And so if you could just describe again, if we went that route, what that process would look like?
Sure, it's a pretty well-established process by other larger cities. And there is different ways to do it. Some people put out a big notice that they have a lot of money available and it's like a big call for projects. So that's the way that bigger cities typically do it. Smaller cities or towns that have one site like we would if this were approved put out something that's similar, like a request for proposals. So we put out a big statement that says, here's what we're looking for. We have this kind of site, this kind of conditions. This is what we're looking for. And then you select a developer, you kind of get the applications, you interview them, you have a whole process. And then you go into an arrangement with them to kind of negotiate. And see if you can come to an arrangement. And they do some feasibility analysis and some financials and then you think about what you want. And then you come to an agreement on what would be included. And then you would put the key aspects of that into writing so that there is a shared understanding and know what would be, you know, what would be fine tuning later and what would be set up front. And then you usually would as part of that negotiate with them for the financial arrangement. So where they get their funding, what's the gap that I mentioned, the gap in their funding? So if you're contributing the land, then that's going to be different than if you're contributing money and didn't have the land, if they were buying it separately or if it was given or something like that. So there's a good opportunity to work through the design, the details, the architectural quality. All of those things are negotiated with that individual developer, knowing, of course, that, you know, they have a set solid, you know, professional standard that they develop at. And if the town was looking to go to a higher standard, that there would be an expectation for additional funding to go to a higher standard.
And then just a follow-up on that, just at the outset of the process, based on your understanding of you know, the the realm of possibilities for nonprofit developers, would do you think it would be in the scale of like three to five proposals that we might get or, you know, how many of these kind of operators are there locally? That might be. I don't know if you know that off the top of your head, but what would your sense be?
Um, I mean, I think that's about the right order of magnitude. You know, there is, you know, probably ten of these kinds of operations. And you would hope, we would hope to maybe get five and have a choice among five. Three would probably also be excellent. So anything in there would be probably a good outcome. Because the people who do this all day really have a lot of experience at it. And they're just a handful of people because it's so difficult to do these kinds of developments and get the financing.
Thank you.
Mary Ann?
Thank you. My first question has to do with the buffer. What do we gain and what do we lose by changing it by a few percentage points?
Okay, so the buffer is a guideline. It's not a law. And it comes from that no net loss law. And the intent of that is to keep us from doing those kind of last minute rezonings. So if we fall out of compliance, then we would have to find a new site and do a rezoning within a hundred and eighty days. So the idea is to have enough wiggle room so that as projects come in, you're still within reason of what you projected. So for us, we're so small, the buffer is really challenging to implement. It makes a lot more sense in a really big city where you have like twenty or fifty sites. And they may go up or down by a couple of units. And then at the end of the eight years, everything worked out because you had wiggle room. For us, it's hard to really determine the pros and cons of making those adjustments. When we've had the conversation with the housing element committee and, you know, Sarah and Jeff can can speak to this through their participation. There was discussion about sort of complying with the guidelines and being conservative and trying to comply with the intent of of what we thought HCD was putting forward. But there was a lot of discussion, right, about what was that right level? And certainly reasonable people have have disagreed on this. So if we reduce the buffer too much or in a way that's not thoughtful, we could have pushback from HCD. That's the first thing. And we could have, if they approve it, we could have consequences when we go to implement the housing element. Because then we won't have like kind of a backup plan and have to end up doing rezonings. The, you know, the positive side of reducing it is that some residents have expressed through the course of this process that it's ideal to them to build the exactly two hundred and fifty-three units. And then other people have said, no affordable housing is good. It would be good to build more than two hundred and fifty-three units. So being conservative is fine because if a few extra units get built, that's great. So there's kind of a philosophical question behind it too about, do you want to be more conservative? Or do you want to try to really be very targeted? But it's just very challenging for us to be very targeted because there are so many unknowns and things that are outside of the town's control.
So a stronger plan would have the twenty percent buffer.
I think from an HCD certification point of view, for a very like straightforward review, right? They weren't like digging into the details, then twenty percent is stronger than a lower number on its face. But you know, a different buffer with a rationale could also potentially be appropriate and and be certified.
Okay, the sunrise concept, is that more appropriate for town-owned land than privately-owned land?
Um, I think from a technical point of view, the answer is yes. Because the sense the town controls it, we would have more say in when in the housing element cycle it would be developed. And so there's that that basic uncertainty is taken out of the equation. If we had a privately-owned site that had a sunrise, so it didn't come online until later in the cycle, then that property owner would have a reduced time to develop it still within that eight-year period. And that could, you know, create constraints that that private property owner, you know, might not line up for them. It might be too much uncertainty. They may not wish to take on any kind of financial aspects that can be associated with delays in projects.
Okay, so applying the sunrise to Ford Field, just to clarify, we'd have one to two years to do a really detailed site analysis and figure it out. And at the same time, the residents who feel that there are other options could explore those other options?
Yeah, I think the way that I understood the planning commission's discussion about this was that maybe the ADU production would be very, very high. And that could somehow meet the requirement. Or there was a planning commissioner that thought that there might be a site that was going to become available. He didn't elaborate. Or if something else just came out of the woodwork, if something that, you know, somebody changed their mind or one of the larger landowners came forward and was interested, then it would be possible to substitute a different project for Ford Field open space area. But in the meantime, that would still be on the books and would kick in. And we'd be working on the kind of the feasibility of it under the staff's analysis. So that the site could be developed promptly, you know, when it was decided that it was time to go forward.
Okay, and then my last question has to do with Glen Oaks. When the housing element committee finally decided to accept that site on the list, had they considered other options?
Yes, they had considered a lot of other options. So they looked at over, there was about three meetings particularly on this topic. Like really focused on this topic, you know, like I said, there was seven altogether, but three really focused on this, like I would say. But gosh, like fifteen hours or so of discussion on this in public comment. There was very strong opposition to upzoning single-family residences. And this is the most common strategy that's used by especially mid-sized cities. Is that you would upzone single-family homes that are adjacent to other multifamily or commercial uses or mixed uses uses or transit areas. So that's what larger cities do is upzone single-family. It's very common. We see that throughout California. The very initial proposal back in February included upzoning single-family residences. And that was not well-received by the residents and it was not well-received by the committee. There's very strong opposition. So that's when kind of the big pivot happened and the committee started looking at basically every other site that they could think of. All the town-owned sites, you know, just really drilling down on which sites in the南朝市area would be appropriate. Taking off the single-family residential sites off the list completely. Looking at the larger sites to see if those would be feasible. So they did all of that over three or four meetings right there in the middle.
Thanks.
Jeff, I see your hand went back up.
Thank you. I just reminded me of something. In terms of the ADUs and JADUs, we've talked a lot about the difference between getting them built and actually getting them rented. Do we, you know, is HCD going to want to see deed restrictions on some of these showing that we're actually getting either ADUs or JADUs rented to low-income or very low-income families? And how are they going to look at that if we if we if we were to project more ADUs and JADUs in our in our initial housing element? Would we have any way of even, are they going to differentiate between building them and renting them? And how would we even begin to demonstrate that we're complying? Even and thinking of that sunset period, I mean, we could show that we're building JADUs and ADUs, but can we show that we're actually renting them?
Yeah, this is one of the most kind of complex questions to unpack in all of this. So let me try and and let me know if I'm getting to your to your questions. So we have the allocation formula and we consider it to be a safe harbor. We expect them to approve it. Although there's sometimes surprises with HCD. And so if we use that formula, we can put those units into those categories without deed restrictions. Okay, so they're not expecting us to put deed restrictions. If we wanted to justify a lot more units with more programs and more incentives, like if we wanted to raise the number much higher, then deed restrictions would probably come into play. And it would probably require financial incentives and then deed restrictions. So as you recall, the committee talked about, it doesn't really make sense to, this is me paraphrasing, kind of my understanding of that discussion. It doesn't really make sense to subsidize construction of a new ADU because they're so expensive. Right? So we've heard numbers from six hundred and fifty thousand dollars up to a million dollars to build an ADU. So the subsidy that the town could provide would not be meaningful and would not be kind of proportional to putting a deed restriction on that property. And probably no reasonable property owner would do that. A junior ADU might be different. You might be able to construct a junior ADU for, we heard a number of fifty thousand dollars along the way. And so in that case, the town might be able to give an incentive if that person committed to renting to a low-income person for a certain number of years. So not the full long fifty-five years, like for a big affordable housing project, but some lesser reasonable amount of time to balance proportionally to that town incentive. So so that's kind of a way to think about it. That deed restrictions would certainly be impressive to HCD if we could get them, but they're going to be hard to get. And we'd have to think about all the different parts of that program to make it work. So does that answer at least the first part?
Oh, yeah. Um, I mean, to put a fine point on it, if we're talking about the sunrise provision for the Ford Field site. We're talking about ways to replace fifty, specifically fifty very low-income units, which means we'd have to be producing. A bunch of JADUs that didn't fall, I mean, if it was across all categories, we have to produce three times, we have to, it was a hundred and fifty extra JADUs. But to replace those fifty, we'd have to somehow show that we're deed restricting them or somehow show that we're actually renting those fifty of those. To make up for the, you know, what we're not getting at Ford Field. That's, am I phrasing that correctly?
Yes, I think that's that's what we expect. Um, and I would not be surprised based on the way that the state laws have changed over the last couple of years. That this would become more strict in the future. That they stop using the safe harbor and start making people demonstrate more that the ADUs are actually being rented.
Yeah, I I agree. Thank you. That's that answers my question.
Okay, I have a a handful of questions. Um. Let's see, my first one is on the expansion of affiliated housing to allow. Uh, other members of the town workforce to live in those affiliated units. Why only the town's workforce? Why not the, you know, broader area if somebody is working in Woodside that they could live at? Christ Church, for example.
Um, it certainly could be um written that way. Um, you know, being thoughtful about the fair housing requirements again. We would expect there to be some sort of, usually there's a preference for people who live or work already in the community for these types of units.
Wouldn't that be less affirmatively furthering fair housing? Because you're restricting it to people who are already in the community rather than more broadly opening it?
Yes, it's a balance. It's a balance. Um, and so and it's a policy decision. So not every community has that kind of local preference. Um, and so these are questions that would be answered when we get to implementation of some of these. Or if the council wanted, could be included, like the details could be included in the housing element, so that could go either way. Um, the idea was, when we were thinking about affiliated housing, we were trying to build on the success of Priory. Where people, by living and working in the same community, there is a true sense of community. And because we had a committee member that lives there, we really got a sense of how real that is. Um, we also were looking at it from an environmental point of view. Is we really wanted to create more situations where people could walk and bike and not drive so far. Um, and continue that longstanding ethic of the community. So those are the other sides, um, in terms of balancing priorities.
Got it. Yeah, I my my exposure to Priory housing is mostly through my kids and the friend, their friends who live on site there and. The the parents may love it, the kids, where they're living next door to school, it's a little bit of a different uh aspect for them, I think. Um, all right, next question I had, um. How would the opt-in program, um, oh, so first, actually, um, I I was unclear, is it? Four per acre or six per acre for the opt-in? I think you had six on your diagram, but that's because it was an acre and a half site, so it's it's four per acre. Would be the.
Okay, so um, the committee originally talked about six units per acre.
Yeah.
So you go back into materials, old versions had six units per acre. Then the committee was more comfortable with four units per acre, so that's what's in the current plan. The diagram showed six units because it's a one and a half acre site.
Got it. So that leads into my next question, which is a lot of those bigger sites are in the Westridge HOA area. Um, how would opt-in upzoning interact with HOA requirements? Would people who live in an HOA be able to opt in?
It would depend on the language of their exact um CCNRs or other restrictions. So we do know that there are HOAs in town that limit. Um, things other than single-family, but it would be a case-by-case um evaluation of those CCNRs.
But Westridge does, is that correct?
Um, you know, Cara has at some point reviewed them, but I don't know if that's, you know, fresh on our minds. Um, maybe Cara can chime in in um in a moment, but I would say, um. This is an area where state law is moving in this direction. And a lot of communities that are are starting to do this are finding that the um consequences are not as bad as they thought. And so there are places that are re- um, reducing these kinds of restrictions. Um, because they're finding it is compatible. So there could be um opportunities in the future for change, you know, with the CCNRs in the community.
Yeah, my 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 concern or question or the direction of the question is really much more at, you know, if we wanted to turn up the knob on opt-in, for example. How much we could do that, you know, how many sites are actually available to opt in if the CCNRs of some of the HOAs might. Prohibit some of those sites from even being, you know, effectively on the list.
And it might be a very detailed analysis um that we would have to really consider. So I think Westridge has some language about not allowing apartment buildings. Um, this is from memory. But like, maybe cottages would be acceptable. You know what I mean? So maybe you could have a certain, maybe you could have four cottages and they would deem that consistent with their CCNRs. But a building with six units wouldn't be acceptable. So tha- that's kind of an example. Um, but you make a good point in terms of how far can we turn up the dial. Only from a HCD point of view, only as far as we can justify.
Right, yeah.
So being thoughtful about, we would, if we tried to include a lot more opt-in units. Um, we would have to, I think, provide a stronger justification.
Okay, thanks. Um, and then um. One of the questions was about SB nine as an alternative to the opt-in. Um, what would the mechanism for that be? Would that be liberalizing? Because we have our our local SB nine ordinance, which really clamps down pretty hard on the ability of people to actually. Exercise their rights under SB nine. Would it be a liberalization of those rules?
I think it would be a liberalization of those rules and trying to find the right level. Um, of still being compatible with the community, but um not being so tight that it doesn't feel um feasible to most people.
Okay, I I it's it strikes me, it would be. Quite, I mean, thinking back to the ordinance and kind of the the levers that we have to, you know, that we could adjust on that. It could potentially be a lot harder to craft something there in an SB nine ordinance and actually have a predictable number of units. Versus an opt-in program where we can just say there's, you know, a maximum of six or ten or whatever limit we decide to set. It it seems like it would be easier to kind of cap it or control it. Through an opt-in program where if we were to do it through SB nine. We're kind of setting the rules and hoping for the right number, but it might be more than that or less than that, and we don't really have as much control. Does that seem?
I I think that that's right, and I think um. The opt-in, we'd be starting from scratch in writing our own development standards.
Mm-hmm.
When we're dealing with the state law for SB nine, we're starting with the state law. And then applying the carrots and the sticks to try to get people what to do what we want them to do. Which is mostly comply with the setbacks.
Yeah.
With the.
Within the straight jacket of SB nine, you're limited in what you can actually control.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, let's see, next. Or if we were to do opt-in, um, that would involve some amount of rezoning. Would that rezoning need to be completed at the same time as the housing element? So that would be part of the rezoning that you guys are working on while HD is percolating and thinking about our. What kind of comments they want to get back to us with during the summer?
We would need to create the basic zoning structure for it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but the council will recall, we've talked about that um. Idea of completing our zoning by twenty twenty-three, January twenty twenty-three to maintain local control. And that rule is specific to sites that are in our sites inventory. So the opt-in sites would not be in our sites inventory. So um, they would be, it would be a program instead. And so we would have to create the main, I'll call it the container. The basis of the zoning would need to be done by January, but we wouldn't have to know every site and exactly how it was going to happen by January.
Okay, got it. So it's we're, it's not like we have to rezone the whole town to say, first second, first six lucky winners can. Put four per, four per acre. We would do it later as part of a program.
We believe that we can and we, um, you know, we continue to work on the technical aspects of this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we've kind of, we've met with the technical team, we think that it's doable. Um, and so what we're presenting to you, we think is possible, you know, but depending on on your direction and how it ends up being. We have to then think through the technical aspects of it again.
Okay, um, my next question is about um ADU projections. And I know that they're based on the last, you know, five years and three years and. A certain amount of magic fairy dust. Um, what, ca- can you just refresh my memory of? The ADU regulation changes that we've made over the last few years? Because I know we've changed the ADU rules a couple of times and that's had. Consecu- I mean, we've liberalized them, we've made it easier to for people to build, you know, mo- have more flexibility in ADUs that they're building. And I think that's led in more recent years to an increase based on the fact that we've already changed our ADU regulations. And so looking at the ADU production rate from five years ago, doesn't really reflect what people are doing. Based on our current rules. So while we're we're looking at. Programs to increase ADU production going forward as part of Cycle Six. We already did some stuff in Cycle Five that should have increased our velocity of ADU production, and I think it has. And so if you look at the most recent years, those numbers, I mean, they're, it's small numbers, so it's hard to tell. But those may be more reflective, or we might be able to make a case to HCD. That those numbers are more reflective of our current ADU regulations, which have changed recently. To be more liberal.
Yes, and I agree with what you're saying conceptually. Um, let me give the counterpoint a little bit. Is that, um, you know, the big state law changes that um created. The rules that we have today went into effect in, I believe, twenty twenty. Um, and we codified them in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
And so HCD already knows about that, and that's already part of their thinking when they look at our numbers. So they already know that most people's numbers went up because of those state law changes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we also would explain to them that we did our own set of code changes in twenty eighteen, early twenty nineteen. Um, and so we have seen larger ADUs and more ADUs that are kind of more rentable or usable by different family configurations. Which was one of the goals um of that kind of process. And definitely ADU approvals are going much faster. So that is definitely true.
Mm-hmm.
So our numbers have gone up um a little bit. This year, they're up quite a bit. But you can think about it different ways. Are they going to stay up or was that kind of pent-up demand from twenty twenty when our numbers were really low?
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, I think whatever argument we present to HCD, they could present the alternative argument. And so that's why it's kind of, you know, we we have to tell the whole narrative. Um, of of what we think is happening and what we expect to happen in the future. And I did give the reviewer a little bit of this um background information when we were talking to her. Um, the staff member from HCD about our ADU numbers.
Okay, um, and then my last question is sort of part question, part. Preview to to maybe a bit of a discussion that may come later, and it's around the buffering. Um, and. You know, as I read through um the no net loss rules. Um, it strikes me that, and and the guidance from HCD, it strikes me that really. You know, the guidance is just that. It's HCD trying to advise us on how to not end up in a really bad situation. Two, three, four years from now, when, you know, let's say we decide to move forward with Ford Field. And we do a big complex design thing, and it turns out we only get thirty very low-income units there. And then all of a sudden, we have a hundred and eighty days to rezone something to find twenty more very low-income units somewhere in town. That's a situation that I think absolutely nobody wants to end up in. Um, and so I understand why HCD is is trying to encourage us to provide a buffer. But I think we should look at this buffer not as, as you said, it's not a legal requirement from HCD. It's an advice from them that we should be doing this, but we should be looking at it. From the point of view of how it benefits us, how it helps us avoid getting into that horrific situation. Where we have three months to figure out what we're going to rezone to twenty units per acre. Um, and to actually do the rezoning, um, which is, I mean, it's barely enough time. To even, you know, have the hearings and do the work that we need to do. Um, so, you know, on that basis, when I look at this, a small town. You know, each line on that the site summary. I I almost think we should think about what the appropriate buffer is for each specific project. Um, and to my mind, pipeline and pending projects. Well, actually, the wedge is one of those, so the wedge would require maybe some buffering, but the other ones where they're under construction. You don't need to buffer those. Those those are going to get built. Those sites are going to be there. Um, the ADU projects also don't need any buffering. Because if the ADUs don't get built, the sites are still there and available for ADUs to get built. We can't have a net loss of ADU sites unless we change our ADU regulations to make them more constrictive, which we don't plan to do. Um, on the other hand, the Ford Field Housing Project or these other ones that have, you know, large numbers of units. In single projects seem much more risky, and I think for those, it would be prudent to have. You know, a larger buffer for those line items. And so rather than looking at it as an overall percentage. For each column, looking at it, you know, on a row-by-row point of view for the site inventory. And saying, how risky is this project? If it were to fall short, how likely is it that it would, you know, how many units would it fall short by in each category? And really thinking about it, not from a kind of high level, well, should it be fifteen or should it be twenty? Because I don't think that's the goal here. The goal is to protect ourselves against. A net loss that would lead to, you know, catastrophic situation where we have a hundred and eighty days to find and rezone some part of town. Um, so, you know, I I I think that's an exercise that's going to require work, so I don't think. We necessarily want to make a big adjustment um to the numbers in the initial draft that we send to HCD for their comments. But it might be useful to put together a side letter or something to them, saying, we don't, we don't like this buffering concept as a small town. This, the the guidance isn't very helpful for us. We don't think it's going to provide us with the protection that we feel comfortable with. Um, against a net loss of sites at some point during the eight-year planning period. And so we want to put a little bit more time and thought into what the appropriate buffering is. And do it based on analysis of each of the specific sites that are identified in the site inventory and how likely it is that we'll lose units on each one. Um, so is that an approach that you think? Makes sense? Is it, is it, you know, something that has been thought about already at the committee level? Uh, you know, everything that I've seen seemed to be much more around looking at the columns and just picking a number. And as you said, people find it hard to kind of say, well, should it be fifteen or twenty? And I think probably some of the columns might be thirty and some of them might be closer to zero. Um, if you look at the individual specific projects and how likely they are to happen and what the risk is of losing or gaining some some units on each of the projects.
Um, the, this is not something the committee discussed in this way. Um, and it is not something I have heard my colleagues discuss in this way. But your description does make sense to me in terms of the intent of the law itself.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think it is different than the guidance. Um, and so I think we would be forging a path on this. I think it's, I think it's creative approach that would require, any creative approach requires a lot of. Uh, justification and communication um with HCD. And so I think it's something that if the council wanted to pursue that, we would have to think about. Um, just really analyze it. Think about any unintended consequences. Look at the math. Um, look at our choices because our number of sites is so small. But this kind of approach, um, just to me and my initial reaction, my, um. Is that it probably makes good sense for the small number of sites that we have. And like the percentage makes more sense for a large city that is going to kind of come out in the wash, because they just need some extra. I mean, if you have fifty or a hundred sites, um, then, you know, then this, then the percentage makes sense. Just do thirty percent and nobody minds in a big city and everything's fine. Um, so I think more detailed analysis of that could, could be very um interesting, and I don't know anyone who's taking it on in that way.
Yeah, I may, I think one, one reason that, as I thought through it, this approach made sense to me is if i- i- I'm looking specifically at the Glen Oaks site, um, which has, you know, mostly above moderate income housing units, and it's a lot of them. But most of those units are required to fill the buffer as opposed to hit the ninety-nine units. And so if we could reduce that buffer, because you know, the pipeline units and the projected ADU units don't require a buffer, and we're pretty sure that the Sequoias is going to build the units that they say they want to build, because they've presumably figured out that it's economic. And Christchurch, you know, is pretty likely to build maybe at least five of the six units. Then instead of needing twenty-seven at Glen Oaks, we might only need five or six. And that starts looking more like, you know, the housing for workers at the Equestrian Facility as opposed to replace the Equestrian Facility with a much larger number of units. And so if we, if we, you know, between the draft that we submit to get feedback and comments on from HCD, we submit a side letter when they have that phone call to ask us about why we were thinking about our buffering the way we, we are, we can begin to engage them and, and ask them about this different approach to buffering. We might be able to, you know, reduce the number of units that need to be built at some of these sites that I think are a little bit more painful, um, like Ford Field and, and Glen Oaks. Um, and, and it may not be, it may be that when we look at it, we actually say, oh, well, you know, no, we really, really need those ones at Ford Field, but it may give us a little bit more flexibility and, and certainly what it will do is protect us against actually having a net loss and three or four years from now dealing with a really bad situation.
I think, I think that there's, yeah, value in um evaluating the, the actual potential consequences.
Yeah.
Instead of the kind of theoretical ones that are built into the guidelines. And then I would just say, based on everything we know so far, we probably would want to start a dialogue with HCD sooner rather than later, because it would take them quite a long time, I would think. Um, to be able to work with us on something entirely new.
Mm hmm. Okay. Okay, those were all questions that I had for now. Um, anybody else, council members have anything further? If not, I will go to public comment and oh, sorry, go ahead, John.
Yeah, I just, I just wondering if we could take a short break before we get into the next section of them.
Yeah, we can. I, I, um, I, I will, before we do, just prepare the public and um maybe talk about how we might do this. I suspect there are going to be a large number of people who want to talk tonight. Um, we have eighty-four attendees in the Zoom call and the schoolhouse looks pretty full from the wide angle shot that I can see on the camera. Um, so, um, it, it, uh, we'll try and get through this as efficiently as we can, um, once we get back from our break. Um, but uh, please bear with us, because a, a lot of people will have their hands up and we'll be switching back and forth between the uh people in Zoom and the people who are there in person. So um, bear with us. Um, but um, I think we will take a brief, let's call it a seven-minute break and be back at nine-twenty. Does that work for everybody? Okay, I will see you back at nine-twenty.
To put it over here and to put over there. Over here, over there.
He'll see it.
Little wine.
Yeah.
There's a little conglomeration of us.
Just helped with Jones.
Lessons about this.
I, I've never seen it in my life. It can't even happen. I never, ever.
Okay, we're coming up on nine-twenty. I don't know if the schoolhouse can hear me. I don't think so.
You ready, Mr. Mayor?
Ah, yes.
All right, we're going to get back to session here if everyone could take their seats. Thank you.
Okay, so welcome back, everyone. Um, I see a number of hands raised uh in Zoom land. Um, I think, um, one of the first hands raised is uh Jocelyn, who was Chair of the Ad hoc Housing Element Committee. Um, I think I would like to call on her first. Um, and uh, if we are ready to proceed, could we please do that? Oh, Laura's hand is up first. Laura, do you have a?
But just a question, would you like me to do what we've done in the past where I keep track of the questions and try to answer them at the end of the public comment?
Yes, please. I think that um would be best. There may be uh the occasional one where it might be a quick answer, or I'll throw it to you, but I think overall, it would be best to, most efficient to kind of get all the questions together and then answer them all, all together.
Great, thank you.
Jocelyn, go ahead.
Yes. Hi, Craig. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Fantastic. It's kind of funny to be on this side of things, because usually I'm sitting in your chair. Trying to manage this, so, um, well, I think you guys are doing a great job with the meeting tonight. Laura in particular is a great presentation and all the summary of everything we've been working on for the past eleven months. Um, so I didn't really have any questions. I just wanted to share a few thoughts about the process. Um, and I'm just really proud of the combined efforts of the Ad hoc Housing Element Committee. There've been a lo- fifteen members who've been involved. Jeff and Sarah have been really instrumental in helping our team succeed, and I want to thank them for, for all they've been doing. Um, I also want to thank the town planning staff and the consulting teams working with them. I mean, it's, it's been a great experience. Um, and I think we've conducted a really robust, inclusive process. And in the end, I think we've come up with a plan that is fitting for our community and meets the state law at the same time. Um, I think it's important to highlight the very high rates of attendance for the committee. Most of the fifteen committee members attended all the three to six-hour-long meetings on a monthly and sometimes bimonthly basis. So and they're a really dedicated team. Um, and then we always had a really high level of engagement at these meetings with robust discussions. So I want to thank the, the members of the committee. Uh, I also want to highlight the very high levels of attendance by townspeople at these meetings. Like tonight, we've had, you know, fifty to a hundred and fifty people on the Zoom meetings. Um, and this just hasn't been the case. Um, Laura's found out in talking to other towns in the area. Um, so kudos to our team, kudos to the townspeople of Portola Valley for being involved in, in this process. Um, so, and then I guess, um, you know, thanks to Laura and her staff, um, our, our committee was able to come up to speed over this past eleven months on a wide range of really intertwining issues that were complex around housing. One of the key areas that we focused on learning about was safety, including fire safety and earthquake safety. And as you may remember, our January and February meetings were dedicated to hearing from experts on fire safety and delving into those issues. Um, so when we got to the point of considering sites and policies, the committee was really well-informed and able to successfully use a safety lens in its decision-making. Um, and most of us started this process back in August, really without a lot of experience in any of these issues. So again, kudos to Laura and all involved in, you know, communicating and sharing a huge amount of information and getting us to the point where we could uh be effective. Um, another point I want to emphasize is that our work on the Housing Element Plan has definitely been an exercise in compromise. We were faced with a really enormously complex challenge. Um, in a small, complicated town with hills and fire issues and um, not a lot of land that's available, and we had to make really tough choices after considering various points of view and impacts on our town. So I think the committee feels that it's arrived at a reasonable place after a lot of debate and deliberation amongst the committee members and townspeople. Um, but it was definitely an exercise in compromise. And one of the key areas of compromise is around the Ford Field Site. Um, and no one on the committee took this decision lightly to include it in as a recommendation. Um, it's, I don't think it's something any of us really envisioned when we're going into this, is having a, you know, fairly large housing development there or really anywhere in town. Um, but in the end, I think the committee felt it was the best choice to meet our obligations for low-income units. Um, as you remember, and Laura shared tonight, again, the alternative was zoning Nath Forest area for very high density and upzoning homes. And that was met with stiff resistance, resistance from the public. Um, so it just seemed, you know, and in the end, you know, a compromise and one that we feel makes a lot of sense. Um, I also wanted to highlight, um, something that's been coming up. It's just, we had a lot of deliberation on the committee about whether or not we should zone recreation fields in town for housing. And we did discuss this, and in the end, we recommended against that anywhere, including the baseball field at Ford Field. So, um, so anyway, I want to thank the Planning Commission for its work in reviewing the plan, um, and they're adding their insights. I want to thank Town Council tonight um, for your careful review of the plan and your, your recommendations.
Thank you, Jocelyn, and, and thank you to all of the work put in by the Ad hoc Housing Element Committee members um, and the planning commissioners and everybody else who's participated in this process from the public, from the various committees, the committee of committees. All the work staff and consultants put in, I think, is, is reflected in this, in this product. Um, it is, it, it's really has, as you say, thought through a lot of issues and um, there are a lot of pros and cons to all of these decisions. Um, but I think that overall, there's been a, a really diligent effort on the part of a very broad group of people in town to, to try and work through these things. Um, okay, next hand I see up is Rita. Go ahead, Rita.
Thank you for taking my comment. I'll, I'll try to be quick. I just want to talk about um recusals on the Town Council and, uh, you know, as far as for the Housing Element uh group, uh, I, I won't use my three minutes for that. But one Town Council member has initially put part of her home into the opt-in. Um, does that person need to be recused for voting? Another Town Council member recused herself regarding housing in the past due to a possible conflict of a housing spot that's on the list. Does that person need to be recused? And I don't know if there are any updates concerning uh, relationships with Stanford at this time. The Town Council has not been talking about any Stanford um, recusals at this time, but there have been some in the past. I want to mention uh Glen Oaks. You know, everyone talks about Glen Oaks site. But Isola, where my daughter has taken writing lessons in the back there, both of those locations would be closed down to the public. You know, to the wonderful kids that are been taking lessons there for years. Uh, if that site is developed that way. And then to talk about, um, you know, Dorothy Ford Park, which is a beautiful location, which is one of the reasons why I bought my property in Portola Valley as I'm coming in and you see those beautiful trees and the open area coming into Portola Valley. And when I hear, oh, we're not going to um do much over in Nath Forest, because those people are complaining. You know, the people over in Westridge also have a lot to say. And I think it's unfair when we're talking about open space. This group is complaining more, so we're not going to bother over here, but over here, they're not complaining, so we're just going to force it through. But when people give money for open space, they expect that money and that land to they expect that money and that land to still be there for generations. You know, for Ford Field, all these comments that people have sent in about the baseball field and their excitement of it. You know, all the little kids that maybe they're not playing baseball yet, but they're running around that field. Um, you know, practicing for the future or just playing with in a safe place during the pandemic. A lot of people use that. And it's a shame that when people donate for open space, they expect it to to stay open space. And maybe we didn't have the internet in nineteen seventy-two or whenever that money was given. And every dot, you know, pushed and everything, but that money was intended for open space. And hopefully, this will turn around and that land will stay open space and not just put a project, which is a whole nother issue, but I'll write that in at there for the lowest income housing coming into this town, which turns it into, you know, a equity issue. But I I I will send a letter, a separate letter about that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Rita. Next is Diana. Go ahead, Diana. You need to unmute it. You're in.
I did. Am I unmuted?
We can hear you.
Great. I wanted to just very briefly comment on the fact that we actually have a sterling example in this town of multifamily housing, and that is the Sequoias. I was the medical director there. And I think we need to remember that some multifamily housing can be a huge success and can actually house people who have lived elsewhere in our community before they move into that. So I just wanted to add that to this really difficult topic to to bring that to bear. Thank you, and thank you all for the work you've done on this topic.
Thank you, Diana. Um, I will go to Judith in Zoom land, and then maybe we'll take a couple from the schoolhouse. So if you're in the schoolhouse, wave your hand at Jeremy and he'll put you on the list to get called up. Judith. Go ahead.
Thank you. Took me a second to unmute. I've expressed my strong views about protecting open space and parks to the Housing Element Committee and to you before. So you'd be glad to hear I'm not going to repeat those same remarks. I have a few new points. The state is not only asking us to increase housing, it also has ambitious new conservation goals. Most recently codified in Executive Order N eighty-two twenty, commonly known as thirty times thirty or thirty by thirty. Dorothy Ford Park with its creekside habitat and venerable heritage oaks is exactly the kind of property this effort would encourage us to inquire and protect if we were not already so fortunate to own it. How can we focus so entirely on the housing mandate that we ignore the other directives for conservation that are of equal importance? Should we not be better at balancing these two things? Should we not be adding our planning for housing to our general plan and conservation goals rather than replacing those goals? And I recently noticed in the program section of the previous Housing Element, there was a section two forty-five, one H called dedication and land for park or recreational purposes. Uh, it seems a grave omission to have nothing like this in our current proposed housing element. As we inevitably increase our density and our population, we will also unfortunately decrease the livability of our town if we have fewer and fewer parks. I'd also like to focus unrelated issue on keeping our local lower income people as our highest priority, both residents and workers. I'm sure there are any number of low income workers in our community who would welcome the opportunity to have access to new housing locally. In fact, a questionnaire circulated by the previous Rena cycle Housing Element documented that interest. Many more than affiliated housing could possibly accommodate. And the forum recently told the story of a man who lived and worked here for years, spending his last year living in his truck, my Roberts. So the local need is demonstrable. But in Section Seven Goals, Policies and Programs, page one, one, two of your packet, Program Seven, Number Six says, "Develop an affordable ADU rental program that matches low income tenants who have experienced displacement from areas outside of Portola Valley due to increasing rents with Portola Valley ADU owners willing to rent ADUs at below market rates." I'm very disappointed that this currently proposed program not only prioritizes people displaced elsewhere over our own local low income residents and workers, it does not even include locals. If we're going to compromise our historical focus on the natural beauty of our community, at least let's do it to benefit our own workers and residents before others. And lastly, I hope that everyone in the process sees these buffers as a protection to meet our minimum for Rena, sort of a bureaucratic necessity. And that we're very careful not to build those buffer numbers out, not to build to those full buffer numbers. In eight years, we're going to have to go through this excruciating process once again. And we need to hold back as much as possible. So we don't build now, but we will need to build then. We need to conserve the space that we have, the lots that we have, the areas that we have to use later and not do small things on lots that we'll need to do more on in eight years. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Judith. Um, okay, do we have someone in the schoolhouse, Jeremy?
Yeah, I have at least eight speakers. Colin.
Okay, we'll do we'll do three and then we'll go back to Zoom and do three there and back and forth three at a time. How about that?
Doesn't look like Colin's here. Todd Schoyer, who's actually, um, he was here and then he left, but I know he's listening in the meeting. Todd, if you want to raise your hand. If you're there, there you go. We could unclick Todd.
Go ahead. Jeremy, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great, wonderful. I appreciate everyone's giving me a moment to speak. So I grew up in Portola Valley. I actually played baseball as as a child at Ford Field. And so lots of memories grew up in Ladera, lucky enough to reside in Portola Valley now and actually um, was the commissioner for Alpine Little League for the last three and a half years or so. I passed the baton to Jen Sweeney this past July first. And so Jen has taken over, but I still am very involved in youth sports here. Um, as you probably saw today, you've gotten probably a number of letters from our community, the Alpine Little League community. I wanted to just Jen sent a letter as well. She couldn't be on the call tonight. She's back on the East Coast, but I wanted to read just a couple excerpts from it. And my overall question really is, I think there's a lot of confusion for our community, just simply based on kind of how how its message as um, the Ford Field open space project. And I think that what I'm hearing tonight is it sounds like the baseball field may be off the table in terms of being re going away completely. It sounds like maybe there's some discussion about redesign, but I think there's going to continue to be an enormous amount of confusion just with simply the way that we're messaging this within the community. So I just want to mention that as one side item that may be helpful for us to reconsider just how we message that. But on a larger level, just wanted to kind of share some of the sentiments from our community, Alpine Little League. I'll just read a little excerpt from Jen's note that she sent in to you today. Um, that as you're likely aware, Alpine Little League has for generations used Ford Field and Alpine Road as our flagship Little League field, hosting our highest division majors, as well as countless championship district tournaments and community events. Thousands of children have used this field and it serves as a training ground for a couple of major league ball players, two of which actually I think you received messages from today as well. Um, we take great pride in the beauty and the history of this field that is a showcase for our league and Portola Valley. Little League teams from around the Bay Area, including Menlo Park, San Francisco, and the East Bay love coming to play on this field and experiencing its unique and striding, striking, beautiful setting. Ford Field is the centerpiece of Alpine Little League activity. It serves as a gathering place for our families, some newer to organize sports, to enjoy watching their children in the community's children play on a team and learn the basic skills of baseball and the importance of good sportsmanship. Youth sports and outdoor recreation are such a critical part of our childhood. As you likely know, the demand for fields by youth sports organizations far outweigh the supply on the peninsula. Soccer clubs, baseball, softball, football teams, lacrosse, and other sports often compete for very limited space available to the kids who just want and deserve to play. As you consider the updates to the Portola Valley Housing Element, we urge you to maintain all current recreation space as recreation space, especially Ford Field. The families in our community play plays such great value on and have enormous pride in the facilities offered by the town. They're a critical part of what makes this town so special. To deprive the children of these spaces would really be tragic. So I'm just leave you with that. Appreciate your consideration. And again, on the overall messaging, I think maybe we can work together to avoid some of the confusion that may be permeating.
Thank you, Todd. Uh, who's up next, Jeremy?
Anne. Hi, my name is Anne Ashney. This is kind of related to what Craig was talking to regarding the opt, uh, the buffer. And I had thought that the opt-in zoning wasn't even offering enough purpose to create all the animosity and and upset everyone is by the opt-in. I can't imagine why we would open that Pandora's box at all personally. Um, so I I just think that we should just drop that, maybe keep that as an ace in the hole in your back pocket in case we need it down the way. But why would we want to open up that now? Because I do think that could lead to a lot of problems down the road. And second of all, it seems like the second other biggest bone of contention, of course, is is Ford Field. And as I was sitting here, I didn't really think about this, and maybe this has been talked about, but why doesn't Stanford just put more of their housing that we fought so hard against in the beginning? And now this has come to the foreground. Why can't they just put more housing in the Stanford wedge? That would be, I don't know if that's even possible, but maybe we should talk about that. That's it.
Thank you. About one more from the schoolhouse and we'll go back to Zoom.
Sure. Connie or Bill Ring?
Thank you guys for all you do because I just wanted to go to sleep and run away. I cannot believe this meeting. Um, so much work and so much love. And, ooh, I came here for so much love because it kind of helped me feel a little bit nervous breakdown because Bill Lane and Alan Schreck founded this neighborhood with no sidewalks and no street lamps. To have a country, to have a community, a little tiny community. And, um, my kids, I texted about this meeting and what was happening. And oh, a neighbor has asked me to say they must declare that you want to build at the end of Georgia Lane at the end of our little neighborhood. And you're supposed to say that out loud, that that's one of the what you call those units? What what would happen? The Lama field? What's it? What's it going to be? Six, twenty, twenty units possibly anyway? I got seventy text messages from my children who never respond hardly ever to a lot of stuff. And Billy Ring has become very eloquent in his old age at thirty-five and just got married. So can you guys declare that Georgia Lane will be one of these offerable, what do you call these units? Yeah, yeah. Can you say that out loud? Because it's supposed to be on record. Okay, yeah, say, yes, Georgia Lane is one of the addresses. There's twelve others that weren't announced, like, like the park. Mary Ann? Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Please address your comments through the chair and and we'll we'll respond.
And Craig, actually Craig, I loved your comments. I like your comments. You sound more cautious and I adore that because we heard rumors that you guys want to do more affordable housing. Anyway, here's Billy Ring's comments. We'd like to make it known that we see the good in making affordable housing for people, but we just need to find appropriate locations and solutions and not just plop it on the first seller's land. City Council needs to look at the long term effects, safety concerns and environmental problems. Yeah, my girl's worried about the mountain lines. I'm like, oh, they should also look into the ideas of adding on to or building around structures that make sense like getting on to the Sequoias as staff residences or building up the hill at Priory for teachers. The path at the end of Georgia Lane that leads to Ormondale sees some of the highest volume of foot traffic in all of Portola Valley. I would almost guarantee that most, if not all of the people on the city council have walked their kids to school, let their kids walk it to school or have it walked it themselves. It is at the heart of the residential part of PV and is the vein that connects the two parts of the town. According to Billy Ring. Furthermore, it feels irresponsible to put this so close to Ormondale and along the path where so many young kids walk to school. I believe that is part of the reason they made it a fire lane and not available to through traffic in the first place. Thank you for your time. Love the rings.
Thank you.
Mom and dad, you can share this. They didn't let me share the other seventy text messages I got. So.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, we'll go back to Zoom and next up is Robin Murdoch. Go ahead, Robin.
Hi, I'm Robin. I'm David Murdoch's spouse. Um, he hasn't asked me to speak, but I am actually speaking on behalf of Brooke Murdoch. Uh, she is David's daughter and she wanted to address Town Council, but she's a bit shy. So she asked me to read this for her. Um, and this is her story, even though it's a bit difficult to hear. Uh, this is only one child's story. Okay, it says, recently I went through a life changing event. My mother had brainwashed me and illegally taken me. This is kidnapping. I had, I had been changed into a blind aggressive machine. When I was rescued, cops had put handcuffs on me from the amount of fighting I did. Months after that, putting my hands behind my back was near impossible from the fear of restraints. Despite what I went through, I realized what was real and what was fake. My dad, David Murdoch, did everything he could to help me, and one way was with horses. I found happiness and passion in riding like never before. I don't usually dream, but when I sleep, I think of horses and Glen Oaks Stables. Glen Oaks is a place of success, passion, stability and discipline. Horses are such a vital part of the world and how people deal with it. Horses have saved lives, including mine. Okay, sorry. From what people don't understand is the meaning of these experiences. Maybe from the outside you can't see, but there are changes happening all around us. In some places, it's from horses. And this is from a fourteen year old girl who just happens to be David's daughter. Um, I did want to mention just from my own comments that Portola Valley, from what I can see from an outsider, I came from Canada, that the founding principles of this town is very unique. Horses, um, the the principle is that horses are an integral part of this community and it should remain that way. Um, we only found out that this was happening probably only about a week and to two weeks ago. And so we started a petition to remove Glen Oaks as one of the sites. Um, from only such a short time, we have over twelve hundred names um, in support of Glen Oaks and which I don't believe the community is aware of. Um, community Portola Valley is very small. You know, forty-five hundred people and already twelve hundred people have said no. Um, I also noticed that right in the beginning of the meeting, it was said that active recreational facilities should not be considered. Well, I can't tell you, Glen Oaks has been very active for about twenty-five years. Uh, lots of children have, thousands have made Glen Oaks their home. And I see my time's running out. And so the other thing is David did start um, some conversations with the town to start a very low income housing. Um, and this was stopped, but he would be more than willing to start this up again. So there is no time constraints, things like permits and surveys. That's already been done. So there's no time constraints at all. And this would definitely satisfy at least six units um, to be part of the affiliated housing development. Um, and I think I'm running out of time, but yeah, I would very much like the county to consider to remove Glen Oaks. Um, not only just that, not just to remove it, but to preserve your this way of life. Um, the the very core that is Portola Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Um, next is Peter Lippman. Go ahead, Peter. You need to unmute. Go ahead, Peter. You need to unmute on your side.
Okay, sorry, it wouldn't unmute when I first touched on it. Uh, I would just, uh, so, so much has been said about Dorothy Ford Park and I would emphasize that we are talking about development of a park, not the baseball field. And it would really help to keep the nomenclature straight. But my main question is whether there is any concern among town staff about the apparent disconnect between the proposal to put essentially all the multifamily low-income housing at Dorothy Ford Park and across the street at the church. Um, that's, um, 58 of the 60 total units proposed for very low-income multifamily housing, 97% in that one tiny area. Right at the edge of the town, far from town, uh, commercial space and the facilities associated with the town center. How, how does that reconcile with the goals of the state law for furthering fair housing? And in the, uh, in the document that town prepared, uh, the, the agenda packet, it notes that uh, site selection is furthering fair housing and that affordable housing is not located in one area. Uh, why, uh, why would we expect, uh, uh, approval of a project that puts all our mult, well, 58 of 60 multifamily low-income housing in one place at the very edge of the town? To me, it uh, sounds rather like a small-town throwback to the discredited mid-20th century urban programs of low-income housing projects that are distant from commercial and business centers. Is this really compatible with the public spirit of Portola Valley? And what, why, why would we think it would pass the scrutiny of HCD review? Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, next is Jeremy Levine, and then we will go back to the schoolhouse if there are more people there. Go ahead, Jerry.
Hi, good evening. Um, Jeremy Levine, I'm the policy manager for the Housing Leadership Council. I wrote in a letter, so hopefully you all know me a little bit at least. The Portola Valley Housing Element Committee, the council, the planning commission, the city staff, and clearly the community at large have all done a really impressive amount of work to get Portola Valley's draft where it is today. And I thought the staff report was a really helpful overview of the town's decision-making process and the debate up until this point. And kind of just put things in perspective, like 15 housing element meetings starting almost a year ago. Uh, community workshops, city council meetings. The draft housing element that was released for public comment on June 8th. The one that the Housing Element Committee completed is the product of a very comprehensive planning and public participation process. I don't know any other city in San Mateo County that has done nearly as much to engage its residents in creating a plan like this. And I would know if they had, because I have reviewed every housing element released in the county thus far, nine of them. Portola Valley's draft housing element as released by the Housing Element Committee is the first that the Housing Leadership Council recommends for certification to HCD. We recommend certification of the housing element despite some imperfections. The city could identify more sites. Some program implementations are pretty late in the cycle. Some assumptions about housing affordability are a little questionable. But HLC is satisfied with Portola Valley's process. The town evaluated a lot of options, considered many different potential strategies to meet its RENA goals and, and really made a good faith effort to not just comply with the state law, though that was clearly a consideration, but also to meet the housing needs of the local community. I read the whole housing element. The needs analysis describes that the median home price in Portola Valley is $4 million. Rent rose $1,000 between 2009 and 2019. Middle-class families, teachers, small business owners, the children of locals are being priced out of the city. The prices, these numbers are really not just numbers. They are walls blocking out important members of the community that people are saying they want. And the draft produced by the town's Housing Element Committee presents a credible plan to start breaking down that wall. I understand the council is under some pressure to plan around other factors besides housing for people, such as horse staples and scenic corridors. Community preferences matter. And HLC supports efforts to accommodate them as long as those efforts guarantee at least as many new homes will be created as are currently planned for in the draft housing element. However, as has been noted, evaluating those strategies will take time. And for now, in order to ensure Portola Valley has as much time as possible to work over its housing element with HCD, we propose the town submit its draft housing element as released for public comment and then work with the regulator to add adjustments over the coming 90-day review period. Thank you so much for your time and patience this evening.
Thank you, Jeremy. Um, okay, over to the schoolhouse. Who's up, Jeremy?
George.
Hi, everyone. Um, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Georgia Savage here. Uh, I'm rising in opposition to the opt-in, uh, upzoning proposal. I, I would recommend that it be stripped out of the, uh, housing element draft. I think this will have a catastrophic, uh, impact on community cohesion. It's unnecessary. And the only certain outcome is endless litigation. First, just let me elaborate. Consider the enormous shift in incentives created by, uh, this proposal. Uh, effectively, we outsource zoning decisions to developers. And there are millions of dollars at stake on the upside for the lucky upzoner who's leaving town and is the first to sell land value property. And to the detriment on the downside to the immediate neighbors who thought they were living in a single-family, uh, neighborhood. Um, this means that, uh, effectively the town council is giving, uh, zoning decision-making power to developers and uncertainty will prevail for the next eight years. Um, also, it's not needed. This represents less than 4% of the, um, RENA requirement. Um, and let's get to litigation. There've been some concerns or, uh, concepts about capping the number of these developments at some level. I think that's problematic because once, uh, my neighbor upzones and builds 10 homes on that lot, my property value will be diminished unless I also upzone. And if the town council tries to then prevent me upzoning, well, then you're going to see litigation because that's what people do when you destroy their net worth. Um, on the other hand, CCRs have also come up for the HOAs in town. Well, that guarantees, uh, litigation as well. If somebody wants to upzone and they have an HOA, the HOA will have to litigate to preserve their covenants. Uh, because all the various residents bought in on the basis that those would be enforceable. Uh, specifically Westridge came up, and in the case of those CCNRs, um, there are mutual covenant buy-in among the 225 property owners in town, one to another, uh, to build only single-family residences with a two-and-a-half acre minimum. Uh, they are in the CCRs which predate the town by decades, uh, i- in terms of enforceability. Uh, you can imagine that if somebody built, um, a large development on a Westridge property and the neighbors' property values are diminished, that could be uh, considered a regulatory taking by the town council for having rezoned uh, Westridge and then one would have to litigate the property rights of the CCNRs and on and on it goes. So the point is, uh, to get 12 units toward our RENA goal, uh, we're going to have eight years of strife, suspicion, uh, litigation, uh, and just the kind of turmoil you see around here. And I, I just think it's for nothing. So I really recommend taking this out of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, who's up next in the schoolhouse?
Next speaker is Liz.
Thank you. I just have some questions. First, a thank you to everybody that's worked so hard on this document and planned for all the meetings. And it's just been incredible. I've been incredibly impressed as a relatively new, uh, resident to Portola Valley. I've been here almost five years. Uh, my questions are, I'd like to know where we can access the public comments that have the, the written public comments that were submitted uh, about the, on the draft housing element that were due last week. Uh, they might be on the website, but I, I need to know that. And I think the public needs to know beyond these verbal comments where we can read each other's written comments. I also had a question on one of your slides, Laura. Um, there was a slide, I don't believe it was addressing affiliated housing. And it talked about targeting the town workforce. And my understanding is for fair housing that, um, if you're not in the affiliate program, we would not be able to quote, target the town workforce, uh, and still remain as, uh, we'll be against fair housing laws. So I think that needs to be, um, cleared up because a lot of people in the community talk about, oh, you know, we really want the Roberts checkout clerk to be able to live here, but we're not going to be able to say, you know, the Roberts checkout clerk is the only one that can live in this area or this building according to fair housing laws. That, that needs to be cleared up. It's a big issue and confusion among residents. And the last question is, um, if you could clear up for us, what happens with the ADU, JADUs, um, let's say three or four years down the pike and they're not, people are not renting them out? Or they're not renting them out at the proper, um, distribution levels that are in the housing element? Does that then throw us into this 180-day rezoning thing? And, you know, are we kind of being facetious relative to ADU, JADU numbers and for them, are they really being rented, et cetera? Can we go back and look at previous data or can you show us previous data that the ADUs that have been built in the last five years really truly are rented and at what levels? I don't, I mean, obviously that's a big project, but I just, I want to make sure we're kind of being honest about it with ourselves. And of course, all the answers to these questions I will take offline another day after we all can go to bed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Uh, one more schoolhouse, then we'll go back to Zoom.
Mary Jack.
Hi all. Thank you very much for taking my comments tonight. My first is short and it's about landscape design. Um, why are we allowing parking on the road locations? We're trying to preserve the general plan ideas. Um, the presentation picture tonight scared the heck out of me when I saw what I thought was the most boring and painful picture drawn. I hope our town did not pay a lot for that. I love to hear about underground parking, any design. I'd like creative style, sophisticated outcome, not boring. Let's put these upfront costs and priorities ahead and make anything we build in this town beautiful, not a bunch of parked cars. My higher priority tonight is the opt-in or upzone problem. We town members appreciate getting credit for showing up. We have also, as with all of you, been putting in extraordinary effort to educate ourselves, follow every meeting, write impressive letters and positively contribute to a thoughtful and successful outcome for the problems at hand. There have been lots of meetings, but none of us, the many town attendees of these meetings have had a meaningful vote. From my point of view, it has been an elite self-selected group that has reaffirmed their own biases about their desired outcome for the rest of us. The fact is that SB9 for the moment exists. State propositions may alter those details in the future, but for now, it can be used by those interested in lot splits. Opt-in versus SB9 is not an either-or. Having both for our town would have two ways to fill lots with housing. To the best of my understanding, a one-acre lot, for example, could get four units. But a three-acre site in Portola Valley opt-in would allow anywhere from four to 12 or more. That is unacceptable. I've read the almost thousand pages of letters from the public. Listen to the meeting of the planning commissions, the ad hoc group meetings. As the process has progressed, it is clear to me that the larger than majority of our town is against upzoning or more the more watered-down title used by the presentation, opt-in. It is time to stop giving lip service to hearing the townspeople and now act on the majority view. Tonight is the night to eliminate the upzone option. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, we will go back to Zoom and if I could refrain from, uh, applauding, I know sometimes people support the comments that are being made, but it can be intimidating to people who want to express the opposing opinion. So, uh, if you could please refrain from booing or applauding. Thank you. Um, next.
Excuse me, Craig, just a second. I, I really apologize. I gotta take another quick break. I'll be right back.
Okay. Um, we'll, we'll continue taking public comment, John. Um, next in Zoom is Nathan Chan.
Go ahead, Nate. Uh, yes, hello. Uh, hi, my name is Nathan Chan. Um, in my spare time, I'm a volunteer with, uh, Peninsula for Everyone, which is a housing advocacy group based in, uh, San Mateo County and the San Francisco Peninsula. Um, and we support, uh, building more housing to create more inclusive and sustainable communities. And it's our estimate, in our view, uh, what, uh, Portola Valley has presented tonight is a excellent, uh, housing element proposal. Um, and, uh, we wholeheartedly support it. Obviously it could be better. Um, we agree with a lot of the comments that were made, uh, by, uh, Mr. Levine earlier. Uh, but, uh, what you have tonight, uh, certainly does seem, uh, very good. I think, uh, speaking sort of more off the cuff and my own sort of personal reaction to it, I, I really, uh, like, uh, how you have tried to navigate, uh, this very difficult optimization of, of objective, trying to make sure that, uh, Portola Valley continues to be, uh, community that, uh, people various income levels can afford to live in while trying to address some of the concerns that have been expressed by the community. Um, the fact that, you know, there's that you're both pursuing site dedication to enable very low-income housing to be built, but also uh, want to make it possible for missing middle housing to be built in other residential neighborhoods, I think, uh, incorporate some of the best practices that, uh, Peninsula for Everyone and other housing advocacy organizations advocate for. Um, so thank you very much for your time tonight and, uh, we hope that the town council will support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Uh, next is Nan Chastag. Go ahead, Nan.
Yeah, just, just found the unmute button. Yeah, thank you for, um, letting me comment here. Um, I do appreciate the Herculean efforts, really Herculean of the Ad-Hoc Housing Element Committee and the Planning Commission. Uh, but in focusing on creating a new housing element to satisfy uh, the mandates of RENA, I think we've created a problem. Uh, the general plan is the blueprint for the town now and in the future. As it's written currently, its elements are balanced. No single element is more important than the others. In the effort to satisfy the RENA mandates, the housing elements has become the tail that's wagging the dog. It's written to take precedence over all the other elements. And this idea is completely opposite the intent of the general plan. As a member of the Geological Safety Committee, I've participated in revising the safety element, so I tend to focus on that. But the other elements are equally important and shouldn't be subordinated. The primary function of town government is the safety of the public, not providing housing. The safety element is at least as important as the housing element, arguably more important. The two are very closely interconnected. The draft safety element has been in revision for more than a month now. It's time to finish it now before the housing element is final. The Safety Element Committee and the Committee of Committees should be reactivated as soon as possible. They should get going. Almost immediately, the Safety Element Committee can begin to review the new version of the safety element. We're waiting. And soon after that, the Committee of Committees can start to review the entire general plan. I think it's important for these committees and the general public to be included in discussions and have substantial input into the new general plan before it's been rewritten by consultants. And I underline that and put it in bold, before the consultants have rewritten the general plan, there should be discussion. Okay, next topic for opt-in upzoning. I firmly oppose I firmly oppose opt-in upzoning because it's not strictly necessary to satisfy Rena. And it absolutely will disrupt our neighborhoods and create discord among neighbors. It's going to be very, very difficult. If opt-in is included, however, at minimum, it should include, as staff has suggested, a sunset provision and the basic safeguards of SB nine that ban developing adjacent lots and impose a residency requirement. Also, it should have a strict cap on the total actual number of units, including ADUs and JADUs. Last quickly for Glen Oaks and Isola, horses are not a dying component of life in Portola Valley. Horses contribute very importantly to the relaxed ambiance that makes Portola Valley unique. Alpine Rock Ranch is being changed into urban style housing development, Stanford Wedge. That would be a terrible loss to the community if the opposite side of Alpine Road are also developed and the property will lost to horses. I urge the council to work with Stanford to encourage it to allow workforce housing on the properties, probably in the low income category, rather than maximize the number of non-workforce units and losing the horses forever. Peace of people and horses can peacefully coexist even under Rena mandates. Thank you for your time and the extra time.
Okay, Nan. Uh, next is, uh, Matt Harmon.
Hi, Matt Harmon. Thanks, everyone. I know it's late. First, I want to thank all of you who have worked extensively on the committee. Laura, your presentation was really impressive and I don't want that to be lost in all of this. Second, I want to remind all of us that with the exception, I believe, of Mr. Levine and Mr. Chan, who I don't believe are part of the community and are part of outside groups advocating for housing all over. Um, I think everyone's disappointed here and this is a tough issue. So I remind us all to think about who we vote for in Sacramento. And hopefully we don't end up with these one sizes supposed to fit all plans from Sacramento that put us in this awkward situation. Um, the third thing I'd say is I think there's some very good points made about concentrating the very low income housing in one part on the outskirts of town. As a Ladera resident, I can say that most of the Ladera community is not aware of that plan. So expect more concern once that word is out. That all said, what I wanted to ask was, have we ever considered annexing land into Portola Valley to help solve our problem? There's a very large parcel of many dozens of acres just behind the Dorothy Ford Park that is currently growing trees and shrubs that could probably be done somewhere else. That annexation maybe, um, does continue to concentrate new housing, but annexation has been done, including in Ladera, which annex land from Stanford. Um, so just another idea that might be a little bit out of the box so that, uh, all of us here who are going to inevitably just be disappointed if this all goes through, uh, might be one other thing. So I'm just curious if we have considered that as an option. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mac. Before you jump off, when you're talking about the land, are you talking about across the creek in Santa Clara County?
I am.
Thank you. Um, next is Judith Mendelson, and then we'll go back to the schoolhouse again.
Hello, um, I also want to add my thanks to everyone for all of your hard work. Uh, all those on the town council, the town staff, Laura, your presentation tonight was even better than usual. And, um, thanks to all the hardworking members of the committees. I have a question and a comment. Uh, my question is somehow with all the meetings, I missed the reason that the units of housing at the end of the soccer field at town hall were removed. At one point we were talking about putting maybe six units where the maintenance building now is. And that's disappeared a while ago and I was just wondering why. Um, and then regarding the idea of a gateway project, um, to include the Ladera Church Parcel and the Ford Park. I think that's a really great idea. And I think the idea of purposely planning housing there, but taking some additional time to plan for the best possible use of that land and building it in a way that is most fitting for the entry to our town is a really good one and intriguing. And, um, I think an idea that people could get behind. I know a lot of people are wondering why it has to be concentrated in there are affordable housing. And it's because we've looked everywhere else and there's nowhere else to put it. So I'm totally in support of putting housing there. I just think it would be great if we could take a little longer to plan the best way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Back over to the schoolhouses, is there anybody up there, Jeremy?
Yeah, we have three more speakers here, Mr. Mayor, uh, Tim Clark.
You for your time. My name is Tim Clark. I'm a resident of Ladera, like one of the recent speakers on the phone. Um, I'm also a member of Ladera Community Church, and we have a parcel which is noted on the maps as a potential housing site. Uh, I'm not speaking for the church. I'm speaking as an individual. And also as a parent who has had kids play baseball at Ford Field. And that was 25 years ago, but somehow I still got the email this morning raising the alarm about Alpine, about that deal going away. My general feeling about the, the, the housing element, this is in the draft form, is it does resulted in a lot of work and a lot of good work. I think that stems probably from strong staff work, which stems from strong direction from the town council, which basically said what other cities have not said, which was obey the law. There's some counties and even some neighboring communities who are worried about mountain lion habitat, for example. I'm here to support the draft element. I think that the planning commission, um, threw a, a number of interesting new ideas pretty much unvetted, um, and have confused the issue. In fact, I think it's because of that, the planning commission discussion that people think Alpine, that that people think that Ford Field is a baseball field is threatened when it's been made pretty clear tonight that that's not the case. I also not sure about this gateway concept, which, uh, has been provided for the end of town and, and would have been apparently might include our parcel. Uh, when I first read it, I thought it was like gateway for open space. But it turns out it's something different altogether that I don't understand. And I don't think, uh, the council has enough information to add that to the plan at this point. So I would urge you to go ahead with the draft plan and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Karen, in the schoolhouse?
Yep. Karen's coming up this week, Craig.
Hi, Karen Askew here. First of all, I really appreciate all the resident comments. They've been so insightful. And, um, I also submitted a lot of written comments. Lots of them are on like page 515, so I thought I would highlight a few key points. First of all, I am in favor of the sunrise provision that the planning commission agreed to on their 20, June 29th meeting. We must unturn every rock before rezoning and building higher density projects. We keep hearing that we need to rezone immediately. Yet on page 33 in the current house, the HCD Housing Element Sites Inventory Guidebook memo, it states, quote, "A rezoning should occur no later than three years and 120 days from the beginning of the planning period." Uh, we need to take that time to look at no new alternatives. We've just had an alternative tonight about the land behind Ford Park. But we have, uh, the opportunity perhaps for affiliate housing with Mid Penn. We've talked about Hawthorns. What about Neely Winery, Roberts or others? What private land might turn over that we can purchase with our inclusionary housing fund? A couple of years could yield better ideas that remain true to our general plan. We also should increase ADU and JADU target numbers and review the income distribution levels, particularly for JADUs. In its memo, HCD notes that many restrictions have recently been lifted. And as a result, using trend analysis when estimating the potential for development may not accurately reflect the increased potential for these units. HCD also states that a locality can, quote, "include programs that aggressively promote and incentivize ADU and JADU construction," end quote. We need to start those programs now, not next year or after. With respect to income levels, uh, the HCD states, quote, "Affordability can be determined in a number of ways. As an example, a community could survey existing ADUs and JADUs for their current market rents and consider other factors such as square footage, number of bedrooms, amenities, age of the structure and general location, including proximity to public transportation. Clearly, JADUs would come in in the lower income categories. Residents have been asking for a survey since last fall. Let's get it done. With respect to open space, I reviewed a map on our site and out of the 1,900 acres of space in Portola Valley, the town owns just over 36 of those acres. That is what we control and we must do everything to preserve it. I loved Craig's idea of looking at buffers by project and not by column. Thank you, Craig, for that great idea. And I know that there are more ideas out there and we need to take the time to find them all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in the schoolhouse.
Uh, Mary Huppie. And that's our final speaker at this time, Craig.
Okay, and then we have, uh, quite a few more still in Zoom, so we'll go back to Zoom after.
It's a big responsibility and I don't have anything brilliant to say except for congratulations on getting through this. It's been an incredible process, uh, and that I know that you're going to do the right thing for the town. I, I feel importantly that the, uh, that the land doesn't have a voice. And it continues not to have a voice. It's very hard to figure out how to give it a, a voice. Uh, it's been a source of humor for a lot of people that there's an endangered species act. There is an endangered species. It's under attack. We have a part to play in the San Francisco Water District, which, uh, we cannot overlook. There's a lot of effort being made to preserve the watershed in the bay. Uh, I strongly, uh, encourage you to think positively about how you're contributing when you put, uh, your housing right on the creek. Uh, and particularly on the very steep watershed that surrounds the creek. I, there's more than just the scenic corridor. There's an environmental reason why it attracts us. There's moisture there. There's beauty there. There's peace there and there's psychological healing. And so I would encourage you to think hard about the difference between open space and green space and environmental value. And I thank you very much for your hard, hard work.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, back to Zoom. Next up is Nona.
Thank you for taking my call. I submitted comments to the planning commission and I expanded on those comments in a letter to the council. I hope you received them and that they were helpful. Here I would like to speak more personally. I love Portola Valley and I feel incredibly privileged to live here. I have tried to give back to the town and preserve the things that are so special about Portola Valley by serving on town committees. I currently serve on two committees and I am a liaison to a third. I serve in order to preserve. At the same time, I also want to see affordable housing so that more people of modest means and of very modest means can live here. But I think that putting housing on Dorothy Ford Park and open space would harm everyone, current residents and people who would live there. Because it would diminish our open space and also would mean that the town's highest concentration of affordable housing would be the farthest distance possible from the town's existing open space. That doesn't strike me as equitable or inclusive or what the town is trying to achieve. I urge you to do everything possible to avoid it. Thank you.
Thank you, Nona. Next is Kristy Corley.
Um, thank you for all of your hard work in working through the housing issues of Portola Valley. What you vote on now determines the land forever in Portola Valley. Are you implementing the housing plan according to the previous town survey? Do you know the pulse of the town residents after COVID? We recently went to the town center for Hawthorns and had nice discussions. Wow, was that so nice for our community to gather again. Why didn't we do this for the housing element? I really enjoyed the process. The town should be able to provide affordable housing with duplexes, triplexes, cottages, cluster builds, ADUs, JADUs, co-ops and affiliated housing with the help of nonprofit partners. We do not need a massive multi-use three-story housing building on Alpine Road. The current bus system is being reduced to one route in August 2022. I don't have the tran, uh, we don't have the transit systems in place to get the residents to Caltrans, much less to our schools. I counted 11 projects on Alpine Road. Um, I'm wondering if you plan on, um, spreading out the housing adequately, uh, throughout our nine by nine mile town. What's our safety element? How can residents participate in that plan and have these roundtable discussions around that, uh, safety element? Um, opt-in, I am opposed to the volunteerism opt-in for the upzone option, even at four units. Um, I don't know. And we already have SB nine as a law to increase housing. And this is another avenue of opt-in that could get PV neighborhoods into wars, which is not desirable. I am opposed to making Dorothy Ford open space and Ford Field a combined parcel to seven acres. I want to confirm tonight, is that your plan? It sounds innocent tonight to join those parcels and merge them. But what comes next, upzoning the combined parcels to 20 units per acre? And that now would include Ford Field if these are combined. Once land is upzoned, it cannot be down zoned with bonus density. Law, the unit size can go from 50 units and much larger, 73. I'm not sure how big it could get. So one parcel is for recreation and the other parcel is for open space. I am opposed to Dorothy Ford Park open space being on the housing list as it should remain open space as the donors intended. Portola Valley will receive less open space donations as the town cannot be trusted for open space donations in the future. I am not in favor of paying off Ford Field D early before 2031. I am opposed to Ford Field baseball being on the housing list at all. These parcels should not be merged. There are over 600 children registered at the Little League annually. And it provides 54 teams at 12 kids each. There's T-ball, coach pitch, minors, majors, and I probably forgot something. Protect Ford Field from, uh, the parcel from being parcel merged and upzoned.
We see about 30 seconds over your three minutes. We have more.
Okay, don't cement over a scenic corridor. Resident safety is a priority. Evacuation is a priority. Um, how will you preserve and ensure the current resident's safety? Please make wise decisions for our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy. Next is Alexander Melendres.
Can you hear me? Oh, there we go.
Yes.
Uh, hello, uh, Portola Valley. My name is Alex Melendres. I'm the organizing manager, uh, for Peninsula for Everyone. I want to say, uh, no, so again, the action, I want to say I appreciate the efforts of the, uh, town, the town council, the staff. I've seen quite a few housing elements between both San Mateo and Santa Clara County. Uh, it have been generally doing housing work for about, uh, five to six years, both at an affordable housing level and at the current job I have now. Um, I used to work at HLC. I used to work at HLC. I used to be a volunteer in this effort. This is a very good faith attempt, did I see, and I wholeheartedly agree with the comments that Mr. Chan, Mr. Levine, resident Clark had provided. I want to make some additional comments here in regards to what this plan with these stats and figures actually represent going forward. They represent equity. They represent roofs overheads. These numbers, these stats represent future residents. But they also represent a deep need right now for existing residents. Those displaced that often don't have a voice. I think the plan is a good faith effort. It's a good faith attempt and it is a good thing. What else is there? You know, humans going back thousands of years have kind of needed basic things to survive, food, water, and shelter. And today, this plan largely represents a long, a large standing, a long-term, excuse me, a vision to address that through an affordable and stable manner. I do also want to highlight that there the housing element has a, and the plan that was presented is a considered approach to ADUs as opposed to other cities that are basically pinning all their hopes and dreams on just their ADU policy. Lastly, the affordable housing portion of the plan is definitely something to be supported. It is impressive as well. Oftentimes when we try to find sites for affordable housing, one of the toughest parts of that, speaking to the mid pen, the Eden of the world, the actual builders of affordable housing, land is the toughest part of that. So very much appreciate the efforts that the city has, have had so far. And I urge you to move forward with the draft ed- as is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex. Next is RMP ninety-seven.
Hi, this is Robin Murray. Yeah, so I suppose two, two points. First is I actually really object to non-residents being given out of time in these meetings. So Jeremy Levine, Nathan Chan, Alex Menendez, I just don't think it's appropriate to use about time or at least be, we should be right to the end of the list. My main point, however, is really just strongly disagree with the upzoning for all the reasons articulated earlier by George Savage. It's incredibly divisive. It's going to pit neighbor against neighbor. And ultimately, there's a good chance we'll end up in litigation between neighbors, between neighbors in the town. And I think if you're going to do this, you really have to have the support of the residents and I don't believe you have it. So I think it's immaterial to the plan. I would drop it. Or if you're going to continue with it, actually make sure you've surveyed the residents of the town to make sure you have support on something that's really so divisive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dale Fow.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Yes, yes. Great. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. First, I'm going to be a broken record on the safety element. I've been harping on this for well over a year. The safety element should have been done before the housing element. We don't even have the draft safety element to review. I think this is an oversight and it may have serious implications. And to Nan's point, I think we need more public participation in reviewing the safety element. It is critical moving forward. Next, a few, a few points here. I am very much against using Dorothy Ford Open Space. If there was any error here, it was an error in the town by not putting a deed restriction originally on this property. It was clear that it was purchased with funds that were donated for this land to be used as, as open space. To opt-in, I support the other comments by George and Robin. Bad, bad idea. I think Craig Taylor said it best. It was a terrible idea. Number three, the Isola Writing Academy. I think it's really bad form. We're trying to create housing, but here we are destroying a business, which potentially destroying a business, which has been around for a very long time and has employees that you would be putting out of work by turning this into, into housing. So what do I suggest? I think you ought to push ADUs and JADUs even harder than you can. And I'm, even though I'm kind of opposed to the concept of a sunrise, I think we ought to push Dorothy Ford and Isola into a sunrise. I'd push it out three years at least to give us a lot of time to find another solution. I don't, I do not like moving forward on those projects immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Next is John Silver. And Jeremy, please let me know if there's anybody who starts waving their hand in, in the schoolhouse. I'm assuming that there isn't unless you tell me otherwise.
Yeah, most, most folks have, have left and
Okay.
have already spoken, so.
Thank you. Go ahead, John.
Thank you. First off, I there's a lot I might say, but my thoughts are muddled. There's been so much that's gone on tonight, but I will say to hear someone's, a few speakers ago, someone said that non-residents shouldn't, either shouldn't be allowed to speak or should be put at the last of the queue or somehow discouraged. That's fundamentally un-American and un-Portola Valley. All people, all people have a right to speak, can be heard. Doesn't matter where they live, doesn't matter anything else. And I feel very strongly about that. And for those who don't know me, I've lived most of my sixteen and a half years in the town of Portola Valley. My first memory was moving to my family's first house on Grove Drive. I played Little League at what's now called Ford Field, but before Tom Ford bought it for the town, it was Kelly Field. Having said that, I also saying that the, I heard a comment, the safety element isn't being completed. It sounded like because of some kind of negligent on, on the town's part. I believe it's because we're waiting for comments from the Woodside Fire Protection District. And the housing element will be modified before it is finally finalized later this year based on the final shape of the safety element. But I do think I'm also glad to hear how many people value the scenic corridor along Alpine Road, the horse facility. Is it called Glen Oaks? I can't remember for sure, but the open spaces adjacent to the Ford Field Baseball Field. I've, anything the town can do to put off committing to development there or find another place would be productive. But part of the reason that that got upped on the list is because so many people at the heart of town near the intersection of Alpine and Portola Roads and Nathorst complained about increased density in that area. So every, you know, we need to look at the welfare of the whole town. I would be happy to accept higher density close to where I am if it would mean protecting the scenic corridors. I would have no problem, by the way, with a neighbor of mine upzoning. And I know people don't like that, but instead of a large house and a large barn and a large ADU that rents out for mega bucks, if it was six, seven, or even more units for people that really need it, but no more square footage, that would be fine. And I don't think well-designed, affordable housing lowers anyone's property values. Look at Webster Wood in Palo Alto. Look at many other fine projects that have been done in Palo Alto. You find wealthy people living nearby with no diminishment of property values. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next is Gary Morgan-Pollar.
Thank you, Craig. There are two very different conversations before Portola Valley Town Council tonight. The one we are having and the one we should be having. In summary, the conversation we are having is that the California Legislature mandates and HCD threatens Portola Valley with that unless we add two hundred and fifty-three housing units over the next eight years, we will be sanctioned. HCD then says best practices require an additional twenty percent additional housing units as buffer. And AHHC's proposed plan complies with these requirements by subordinating all other elements of Portola Valley's general plan, including safety, open space, Alpine Road scenic corridor, as well as wildfire safety, equestrian facilities, and single-family neighborhoods. AHC therefore proposes a patchwork approach to HCD compliance by upzoning single-family neighborhoods, sacrificing twenty percent of Portola Valley's existing open space, including Dorothy Ford Park and Alpine Road scenic corridor, as well as Glen Oaks. In contrast, the conversation we should be having is this. Prior to even creating AHHC, Portola Valley Town Council should have comprehensively surveyed its residents, asking their priorities and preferred trade-offs regarding HCD compliance, as well as seeking creative approaches, approaches as, as among those from comparable communities like Woodside. Portola Valley thereafter should pursue a balanced approach that includes all elements of this, of the general plan that's not subordinate, subordinate wildfire safety, open space, Alpine Road scenic corridor, or single-family home neighborhoods or equestrian facilities. To meet all general plan requirements, Portola Valley Town Council should propose a market-based approach that meaningfully reduces regulations and incentivizes construction of ADUs and JADUs. Portola Valley Town Council and town staff should prioritize creative solutions that incentivize ADU and JDU construction, including a marketing program that encourages Portola Valley residents to create ADUs and JDUs, streamlining the permitting process to reduce regulations, including maximum ADU, AMFA, and other restrictions, identifying and inventorying existing non-permitted ADUs, creating an amnesty program for them and incentivizing homeowners to seek permits. And finally, incentivizing JDUs as the fastest and easiest approach to meet our low and very low income housing unit requirements. Shockingly, only one JDU has ever been permitted in Portola Valley. We have an existing four-point-six-million-dollar housing income fund that could be used for that incentives that would equate to ninety JDUs at fifty thousand apiece. Finally, a PBTC should advocate a sunrise approach that prioritizes JDUs and ADUs and affiliate housing, defers rezoning of neighborhoods, rezoning of open space, and provides three years to assess progress in meeting requirements and adjust as appropriate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gary. Next is Jonathan Buneaman, Buneaman. Sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. Jonathan, go ahead.
All good. Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight here. I just wanted to call in briefly to command the town council and the town staff for the amazing work you have done on the housing element. I think I've been following housing elements throughout California. This is one of the best ones that's, that's out there and a, a really good attempt to get a compliant housing element quickly and create certainty for the town on what is going to happen in terms of housing there over the next planning cycle. Towards the comments that are, that are hoping to get more ADU development with that maybe reducing other planning efforts. The problem there is really the likelihood of them being rented out and actually creating affordable housing and not just additional living space for people that all every, already are housed is actually quite low compared to other options such as true multifamily housing. I think it's very obvious that the town of Portola Valley lacks multifamily housing compared to other towns and cities around the, the area. And it's only equitable if the town of Portola Valley also has multifamily housing going forward. So I, I just think this is a very good housing element with some really interesting creative approaches. And yes, this process is not easy. There's always going to be a lot of pushback. But in this case, you're doing the right thing and complying with the law. And I strongly support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Louis Ebner. Go ahead, Louis. You need to unmute on your side. Now I see you're unmuted, but we still can't hear you. Still, still can't hear you, Louis. Still can't hear you. I think we'll go to the next speaker. Louis, you might want to try logging out and logging back in again. And if I see you back, I will call on you again. Next is Trish Held.
Hi, I just wanted to say thank you and also to reiterate the thoughts of several residents here tonight, which is I am in opposition of the opt-in upzoning provision. I think again, SB nine already exists. There's very little need for twelve elements, twelve of these units, six of them could go into ADUs and six could go into SB nines. I think if you try to like make the opt-in upzoning attractive by putting in sunrise or sunset or making it the same as SB nine, it gets even more confusing. So my advice is to just, it's a sun dog. Just take it out. And then the only thing I wanted to bring up is that also is that I think it was Rita Comas said at the beginning of the comments, something about a town council member who has put their home forward as a potential opt-in upzoning site. And I wondered about the process, because this is all new to me, of recusal, which would sort of implicate that that's a very strong conflict of interest in terms of voting for opt-in upzoning, for example. So I just wanted to know what the sort of policy was around that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trish.
Craig, can I address that?
Yes.
Hi, I am the council member who put my house on the list. I put it on the list after attending a housing element committee meeting in which people said, why are you picking on Nathorst? Why not build housing in Westridge? And I thought, you know, that actually makes sense. All offer my house, but I will tell you, my house is not going to, my property will not pass the safety test. I live on top of a canyon. I am working on clearing it. It has a slope that is so I don't know what the percentage is, but you can't use any kind of I'm so tired. Any kind of little bulldozer down there. It has to, the brush has to be hand removed. So as much as I would like to help out, my property will not be appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, next commenter is Andrea Young.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there. Well, thank you for letting me pose my question. I'm, I'm asking a question on behalf of the Glen Oaks Superior Center. I sent, I submitted the petition of, of over twelve hundred people and I just wanted to make sure you guys received it. So that's really my only question. Just want to make sure you have the petition so you can see the, the names and the people that really are trying to, to save our place. So, so that's my one question.
Okay, thanks. Next is Jordan Grimes.
Yes. Good evening, council members. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm a lead member with Housing Advocacy Group Peninsula for Everyone. You heard a couple of our other members speak earlier. We have members throughout the peninsula and have been particularly engaged with the housing element process and appreciate the opportunity to comment tonight. I'm also a lifelong county resident and member of the county's Housing Element Equity Advisory Group, though these opinions are my own. Just wanted to make a couple of brief comments, particularly on the topic of ADUs. You will want to be as conservative and judicious in your production estimates as possible. Jurisdictions frequently inflate the number of ADUs likely to be produced during the planning period. This is well-known to HCD at this point and will thus face heavy scrutiny. Additionally, while ADUs and JADUs are a perfectly lovely housing type, can satisfy many needs. The town will frankly need a lot more than that to satisfy realistic capacity requirements as well as requirements to affirmably further fair housing. ADUs are great for single people, less great for families. Duplexes, triplexes, and small apartment buildings will not hurt you, I promise. I live near several of them. They don't bite and they will be necessary to provide more affordable housing stock. The opt-in program, I think, is a really fantastic idea. It's creative, it's industrious. It would frankly be great to see other jurisdictions in the county pursue it as well. Really just kudos to staff and the various committees. Really, just kudos to staff and the various committee members on putting that together. I think it's a really smart solution. The broad twenty-unit-per-acre solution, I think, is good as well, although I think it will need to be significantly higher in certain spots to make multifamily development actually financially feasible. And then the final point I'd just like to make is this, as was mentioned by staff, Redwood City received their letter from HCD this week, which actually gives Portola Valley a great benefit, because it's something that a lot of cities haven't gotten to discuss, obviously, since it just came in. It requires Redwood City to make significant revisions. As Jeremy mentioned earlier, Redwood City has one of the best, most comprehensive elements in the jurisdiction, and they still received significant scrutiny and pushback from HCD. HCD is not playing around anymore. The housing element is no longer a rubber-stamp, business-as-usual exercise. Cities have had decades and decades to handle the housing crisis themselves and haven't been able to do so. HCD really, really expects a strong housing element. And as such, I encourage Portola Valley to move forward with what you have already, which is a strong innovative housing element. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jordan. And another hand has just come up, Maria.
I don't have planned comments. I think my first comment would be hold on to the open space. It's so important. And the land, once it's gone, will be gone. The second thing I'd like to say is having heard the people who have come from outside our community, the compliment for Portola Valley and the process we've gone through. I appreciate your comments, but I hope that the residents in town will take that also as a personal challenge to look for small, creative ways to be able to make all these numbers work. And I think that it's been mentioned in a lot of the committee meetings that hopefully are the wording on what's being submitted will allow us to have a little flexibility if we find additional opportunities for low-income housing and all the rest. I think that a lot of the people in this town would be more than willing, and I speak for myself, to offer low-income housing and not necessarily go for the biggest bucks. You know, it's not giving us enough credit, I think, or where credit might be due. So I haven't worded it very well, but I know the easy solution to be able to get something and meet all the deadlines is the twenty-unit-per-acre solution. But I am confident and very hopeful that we'll be able to tweak that a little bit more with some of the ideas that have been put out there and hopefully be able to avoid that solution. Thank you for all your time and work.
Thank you. And I see no more hands raised from the public. Louis, if you are back online, we can try one more time with you. Jeremy, I don't know if there's anybody left in the schoolhouse who would like to speak.
There was a member of the public who already spoke. If she wanted to make an additional point, if you wanted to take that.
Let me go to Greg on Zoom first. Go ahead, Greg.
On the unmute button, is that correct?
There we go, we can hear you.
Franklin, good evening. Hey, Laura, phenomenal presentation in terms of delivery. It was really excellent and comprehensive. I want to make a comment about the densification, which is contained in the draft Housing Element document that you've prepared. And just make a note of, which I've observed and made this comment several times. I mean, you've gone in the housing inventory for the property next to Roberts, which is forty-three ninety-four. You have it listed as twenty-three units in your plan. But the fact is that if you implement program number one, which you described today, because of the obligatory state housing density law, the instant you rezone that property, the owner is able to use state housing law to put forty-three units on that site, not twenty-three. So you've lost complete control of development on that site the instant you upzone it to twenty units per acre. With respect to the more global observation about densification reflected in this plan, I mean, I hope people understand that Nathhorse is being asked in this plan, even though it's been modified as a result of the opposition, but Nathhorse is taking forty to forty-five percent of the total RENA quota in this sixth cycle. It's taking forty to forty-five percent. So the range I'm using there is because I count on forty-three units versus twenty-three units. I think the other observation about Ford Field is that it's taking about, well, I'm sorry, the aggregate total was forty to forty-five percent, including Nathhorse and Ford. But individually, Ford is taking twenty percent of the total RENA quota, and Nathhorse is taking between eighteen and twenty-six. So in aggregate, what that sort of amounts to is that this forty to forty-five percent is being concentrated in point one, zero-one percent of the total land area of Portola Valley. So that's basically one-tenth of one percent of Portola Valley is taking forty to forty-five percent of the RENA quota. So that's the densification statistics. Let me just say, I completely support the Sunrise program. I think it's the most innovative, out-of-the-box thinking that has come out of this process. I think you should increase the ADU/JDU total in the document. I completely support statements made by Gary Morgenthaler, which I won't repeat, and Karen Askew. And actually, observation, I think, you know, part of the reason why this process has, you know, generated so much controversy, rank and vitriol, is that at the very beginning of the process, the town council did not invoke a comprehensive survey of town residents to ensure that whatever the final housing element document is settled upon actually reflects the majority of voter viewpoint of Portola Valley. And so even though it's fairly late in the process, I would strongly recommend, as Karen Askew has stated earlier today, that you go out and make a comprehensive survey of the townspeople with respect to the final product so that we have some comfort and assurance that it represents the majority view of our town residents and voters. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Next, let me see if we can get Louis and actually hear him this time. Louis? Nope, sounds like we still can't hear you, unfortunately. Nope. Okay, sorry, Louis. Maybe if you email us your comments, we can get them that way. Next, let's go to Greg we just had, right? So Jay is next.
Hi, good evening. This is Jay and Holly Hartman, actually, speaking together. And I just wanted to briefly say first that we wholeheartedly support George Savage's comments. So we don't need to repeat all of his points, but we wanted to say that we very much support what he said and think that Opt-In Upzoning is just potentially a terrible, terrible outcome for our town and would create, you know, very significant divisions between neighbors and just the other issues that George mentioned. I'm going to hand it over to my wife, Holly, who has some additional comments.
Yeah, so I would just like to add and echo what Greg and Karen outlined earlier, where, you know, we've been listening to every ad hoc and town planning commission meetings since the inception. And I feel like a really important component that is still missing is the voice of the residents as executed through a comprehensive survey. I think you'd get some really good answers and insights and actionable data off of that. And I feel like it doesn't exist. It's been guessing and putting proposals out there and giving residents two minutes to respond. It's actually nice to have three. So the other thing I'd like to suggest or highlight yet again is that we need to take time before we start running off with plans, because once plans get in place and developers or real estate transactions start happening, they're very, very hard to unwind. So I think we need to be cognizant of that fact, lay out a very strong plan that meets the goals, and move forward with caution. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Next is Betsy. Go ahead, Betsy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Here's Betsy Morgenthaler here. And I'd like to add at the end of this, at the end of the citizen comments or the resident comments, excuse me, my strong support for both the Sunrise clause and the survey, resident survey. Harkening back to the early comments that Director Russell made at the beginning of tonight's program. She pointed out the concern that I think we all share about the loss of local control and the states stepping in with by right enforcement. That's a big concern. At the same time, I'm concerned about the loss of local control and the states' by right enforcement if we do comply. Specifically, I'm referring to my letter sent Friday before five, which I hope you received. But to refresh your memory, the draft provisions eight-two and eight-three, whereby the town is affirming the acceptance of the states' by right entitlement to place shelters for the homeless on any site that we zone for mixed use or multifamily use. I'm particularly concerned about the fallout of that on Ford Field in particular, that we are doing our level best to protect the entire open space of this town, which is in our care and protection. I want to keep it there. I just want, well, it's late. In spite of the fact that we have no homeless in this town to speak of, we therefore have no homeless services. We have no transportation, public transportation, that can connect those homeless that we might be importing into this town with the states' by right clause. We have no means of connecting them to the services that they require, food services, job training, and jobs. For all the reasons above, I urge you to eliminate items eight-two and eight-three in our response to the state. And I ask that as well. We think through very carefully the ramifications of rezoning to multifamily and to mixed use. Not that we don't do it, but we think through the full ramifications of doing so. Thank you for your attention, for your caution, and for your service to this town. We keep you up late at night. Good evening.
Thank you, Betsy. And some of us are on the East Coast, and I can see they're getting very bleary-eyed. So luckily, there are no more hands up from the public. I will give one more check to the schoolhouse if anybody is waving their hand there.
No, we are good to go.
Okay, I will then close the public comment period. And Laura, kick it back to you. We have a number of questions, observations about things, queries about various details. Maybe you could go through your list and respond to as many of those as you have notes for.
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. When I'm done, we'll ask Cara to chime in on the issue related to recusals. So we'll cover that when I'm finished. So there's a couple of questions about the location of affordable housing in the Ford Field open space area and concentrating those units at that location and whether that's okay for fair housing. And so that's a really good question. So I would remind everyone that those rules about fair housing are oriented more towards larger cities and especially those that have really different types of neighborhoods. And the goal there is to not concentrate new affordable housing units in any particular kind of neighborhood, and especially where they have been concentrated in the past or where there's locations where there's concentration of lower amenities or concentrations of poverty, the way that they're mapped through our regional agencies. Our entire community all falls into the same category in terms of its affluence, its schools, its quality of life, and all of those indicators. So pretty much everywhere in town has equal stature when it comes to that. We did speak to HCD representatives when they came for the site visit, and we did talk to them about the fact that it's kind of different in our community. And they said that they agreed with that, that it was kind of an atypical situation. I think they also understand that to have a feasible, affordable housing project, you have to have about fifty units, as we've been discussing. And so that is the best available site based on the determination of the Housing Element Committee to be able to concentrate those. And we do expect to receive a reasonable reception, a positive reception from HCD for that location. There is a question or comment about, there's a policy at seven-six that talks about displacement. And I just wanted to put a little bit of color around this. In larger cities where they have existing housing units that may be more naturally affordable, maybe because they're older or where they're located, sometimes those buildings get bought and then people get dispersed out of their long-term housing units. They get displaced. And so larger cities implement programs, and housing element law asks you to implement programs to address displacement. Well, here in Portola Valley, there are no such units. And so we don't have that same type of displacement where residents are forced out. So this is an attempt to look beyond the town's boundaries and address the state law intent to address people that get displaced. So that's why this is the one policy that focuses outside of the boundary of the town when most of the other policies are focused on serving existing workers and residents. So that's trying to strike that balance. We've said it many times, but Todd, we just want to confirm for the Little League community, for the baseball advocates, there is not a proposal to develop over the baseball diamond. Staff presented tonight an option of considering reconfiguring the baseball diamond on that site. And that could include improvements, which have been talked about quite a bit lately to that site. So there is not a proposal to build housing on top of and remove the baseball diamond. And we'd be very happy to talk with you about that messaging so that your community better understands. I think that there was some confusion in the community the last two days around this. So great idea. Yes, we'd love to talk about messaging. There was concern about development at the end of Georgia Lane. And this may have been confusing for some of you that haven't been in every single meeting, but I have been, and I can explain a little bit about what happened. And so there's been different versions of this Opt-In program. The very original version of it, we took, we held a meeting, and we asked just for volunteers who might be interested. And so then we made a list of the people who might be interested. Then a lot of concern was generated around those specific locations. So there was, at the time, a couple of months ago, a list of properties that included Georgia Lane. Through the process, through the committee, that approach was revised. So there is no list that includes Georgia Lane today. Georgia Lane is not proposed for development under this plan specifically. This plan includes the newest version of the Opt-In for the council's consideration, which does not have specific sites. Under this proposal, in the future, if it were approved, then specific property owners would have an opportunity to apply to join that Opt-In program. So I hope that that helps there. So I hope that that helps there. Liz had a number of questions. There were really great, really great questions. I'm just going to hit on them very lightly, and she said we could take the rest offline. So if Liz, if you're out there, I'm happy to have an exchange with you. Email me. We'll get we'll get on the phone. She talked about can we target our local workforce and still comply with fair housing? This is a very delicate tight rope to walk. And so any program has to be very carefully constructed. But there are examples in other communities where they create a local preference program. There's like a point ranking and you get like an extra point if you live in that community. So that is usually deemed to be acceptable for fair housing as long as you're working within all of the other parameters. But it has to be really thoughtfully done. And so it it's affiliated housing would continue to target local workers. And we expect to be able to develop a compliant preference program for other projects in town, as long as we're very careful about how we do that. She had questions about people really renting ADUs. This was very highly discussed at the Housing Element Committee. I encourage anyone who's interested to watch back that meeting about ADUs. And it would have been in the late fall, like around November. If you want the exact things, you can shoot us an email and we can point you to it. There was a question about the end of the soccer field at Town Center and the six units that were discussed at that location and why that was removed. So that was removed for a couple of reasons. We did do a feasibility study and we did show that we could fit about six units at the location of the existing substation and the adjacent parking spaces. But we also found when we were doing that really detailed research, that there's an easement that goes over that property that's in favor of the property behind Town Center. So they have access rights for ingress and egress over that. So we would have to resolve that easement issue. We also have learned as we've gotten deeper into this, given the cost of a building of affordable housing, we didn't anticipate realistically being able to find an affordable housing partner that would make that site feasible. So it would be a matter of the town paying the full cost of developing all those units. So spending something like four million dollars there instead of spend, you know, spending that same money to help subsidize a much larger project and generate many more units for the same amount of money. There was a question about rezoning, and this is a really fine point. So wow, kudos, Karen Askey for looking this up and reading the guidebook. Super impressive. So there's, this is going to get technical. Sorry, I know it's late, but there's two different ways that zoning can be done under the Housing Element Law. If you do it with the housing element, you preserve more local control. If you do it after the housing element, the way that Karen described it and is described in the guidebook, that is an option. But if we do it that way, then every site on our site inventory has to be zoned at twenty units per acre and a minimum of sixteen units per site. So if it's less than an acre, you stop a zone for sixteen units there. And it triggers a by right development. So we could not have ASCC discretionary review. Council discussed this in detail in the past and gave staff the direction to pursue the zoning with the housing element to avoid that consequence. And that's what I've got for questions. So I'll hand it over to Cara for recusals.
Laura, there there was one more that came up a couple of times, which is the concept of a survey. And at my recollection, is the Ad Hoc Housing Element Committee did do a comprehensive survey to the whole town, and we had quite a large number of responses, did we not?
Yes, we did do a survey to the whole town. I'm sorry, I don't remember the number of responses. I don't know, Sarah might, or we could have Carla look it up for us. But it was significant response rate. And that was about, I think in about February, we did that.
Yeah, I can speak to that. I actually have it in front of me. This is Jeremy. The survey was in February and we had seven hundred and seven responses.
And we did, I think most people are aware, but we did just send a townwide mailing to make sure everyone was aware of the housing sites that were under consideration with links to the website. And so we just did that townwide outreach as well.
Okay, thank you. Cara?
Thanks. So with respect to the conflict of interest issue that was raised, I did prepare a legal memo addressed to the Ad Hoc Housing Element Committee on the conflict of interest rules with respect to the general plan update and the housing element update. That memo is posted under the Ad Hoc Housing Element Committee webpage under resources. And in in summary, there is an exception for participation in decisions involving housing element and other general plan decisions that is permitted by the Fair Political Practices Commission, which adopts these conflict of interest regulations. So and the premise behind this this regulation is that most all council members are going to, and other decision makers such as planning commissioners and Ad Hoc Housing Element Committee members are going to own property in town and those properties will necessarily be impacted by housing element and general plan updates. So as long as a property is not specifically identified or treated differently than other properties in town, members can participate in housing element decisions even though they own property. Also, with respect to the actual designation in the survey by by Councilmember Derwin of of her property, as Laura mentioned, that was really in response to a survey that that town staff distributed and those properties that were collected on that survey. We are, we are no longer implementing the program that will specifically target those particular properties. So just the way we analyze it is that it was just a response to a survey, and so it it doesn't impact the the particular exception. I also heard a question at the end about the state law regarding homeless shelters. There is a state law that says that homeless shelters must be a permitted use in any multifamily district or any mixed-use district that permits residential housing. And that's just a, that's a state law. We certainly don't expect homeless shelters to pop up in in Portola Valley just because, as as the commenter noted, the the transportation, the services, all of the infrastructure that supports these types of housing shelters just are not present in Portola Valley. And the land is very expensive, and so we just wouldn't expect to to see that. But it is a requirement of state law, and so we would have to modify our zoning ordinance to permit these these uses. And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just add on the on the notion of opting in for upzoning and the list of properties that had been identified in a previous cycle of that. I think I also answered that survey in such a way that somehow my property showed up briefly on the list before somebody realized I only have one method of ingress and egress. I had no idea that I was going to be on a list of possible opt-in properties. I I was, as Cara said, just answering the survey about, you know, potential future uses of my property and what might work there and what might not work. Jeff, I see your hand is up.
Thanks. I wanted to expand on that question about conflicts because I was implicitly called out on that one. Three years ago, in my day job, I discovered that I didn't realize at the time, but I had a conflict of interest with Stanford. I, my client was an architect there and client was Stanford Real Estate Services. As soon as I discovered that, and this is about the time that they were applying for their project at 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 Portola Terrace. As soon as I discovered it, I I disclosed it. I I I talked to Cara and and others about it. I unwound the contract. I actually passed it off to a competitor immediately. I disclosed it publicly several times and I recused myself for one year after my last, the the a payment that I received from Stanford, which kind of triggered it all, might might made me realize what was happening. I I've done this job for thirteen years. I have really, really done my best to be above board and not take a dime that didn't belong to me or direct money anywhere that didn't go to me. So I I do not have any conflicts of interest. I did have a conflict of interest. I have resolved it. I do not have anymore. Thank you.
I I would say, since we're talking about Stanford conflict of interest now, I also had recused myself previously at some stage from a Stanford project because my daughter was in the process of applying for admission there and she's now going to college somewhere else. And so I also no longer have the conflict that I used to have. Laura?
I just forgot one thing that may be important to people. All of the public comments that we received during the thirty-day comment period are posted on the town's website. And so it's at portolavalley.net/housingelement. That's our main page for this. The first widget of that expandable menu has all of the public comments. So you can go there to read all of your friends and neighbors' comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so
if I if I can interrupt, a resident wanted to make just a very quick point on on something they made earlier here in the chambers. I said that I would ask if you would allow that.
If my fellow council members don't have any objection, then I think we can hear from her again. Go ahead, Karen.
Hi, it's Karen. I just wanted to clarify when we were discussing this survey. We were talking about one specifically about ADUs and JADUs. We've talked about amnesty programs. We've talked about who might be willing to do one. And we don't have any data. That survey has never been done. Yes, there was a different survey, but that was what we were talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I I I do remember you talking about that. I think there were some other questions about more broad general surveys about the A H A A H H E C operating without any information about the desires of residents generally across projects. I believe there are several programs in the draft housing element specifically around some of the issues that Karen was talking about, including finding out where there might be these ADUs, amnesty programs and and other such portions of what you're talking about. Okay, so then I think I'll bring it back to the council for discussion. I am cognizant of the fact that it is both getting very late and we have just had a long period of public comment. And so I want to know if fellow council members are interested in pressing on right away, or if we need another five-minute break before we go into discussion.
I could use five minutes.
Okay, let us take a five-minute break then, or seven-minute break again, and we will meet back at eleven thirty. Okay, we have about 10 seconds left till 11:30. I don't know if you can hear me in the schoolhouse.
We can, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, and I assume that yes, Mary Ann and John are there. Okay, camera just switch back to the full view. We will resume the meeting then. And I'm not sure what the best way of doing this discussion is. Maybe what might make sense is first, if we do any general comments that council members have, and then maybe we'll go through kind of section by section on the areas where staff was asking for our feedback. And then we can do a sort of wrap up at the end, if that makes sense. I see a lot of nodding. Okay, Sarah's hand is up, so why don't you go first?
I just gotta go because it's, I don't trust myself as the hours go by. It's 3:30 a.m. here. So, um, yeah, I guess I just wanted to to start with some opening remarks and a lot of this, some of this has been said. But I do think after a year, it's important to restate it, just so it's on the record, so if you'll bear with me. But obviously, our role as council members is to listen here and process input from the community and try and make the best decisions that incorporates all the competing and conflicting priorities. With the housing element, we have an enormous challenge and complex puzzle to solve in order to balance the competing priorities in town. As been said, there are passionate stakeholders literally for every single option for and against. And yet, no one option can be evaluated without accounting for the subsequent trade offs and impact to the plan as a whole. Um, and and again, as much has been said about the process, I do want to touch on it. Despite our town being the third smallest town in San Mateo and Santa Clara counties by population, our process has been the most robust by far compared to other similar communities, based on my assessment. To reiterate for the record, the Rena allocation was published in May of 2021. The council appointed the ad hoc housing element committee members the following month in June 2021. The ad hoc housing element committee held its first of the 13 meetings to date in August of 2021. That's about six months before other similar committee communities started. And the committees worked diligently monthly for nearly a year since then with the goal of committing completing the process by the state mandated deadline in 2023. Someone should fact check me, but by my count, we've held over 50 hours of public meetings on the housing element. It's been an exhaustive process as we've heard over and over again tonight. I feel like we've taken advantage of every ounce of time possible, based on the state mandated timeline. And our process has included exponentially more community input than other similar communities on the peninsula. I actually have done some research, it's too late, I'm not going to get into it, but if anybody's interested. I looked at Hillsborough, Atherton, Woodside and Los Altos Hills. When they started, how many meetings they had. You know, if they had a community, a committee, we other than, let's see, it was other than Hillsborough, we were the only community that did have a committee of community members. Anyhow, there are a lot more detail there and if people are interested, please feel free to ping me because I'd be happy to share it, but it's getting getting late. I guess I would just want to say I'm really, really proud of the work of the of the ad hoc housing element committee. And the leadership of Laura and her team has been extraordinary. Also very proud of the contributions of the planning commission. All these people are fellow community members and neighbors. They're all volunteers, especially I would say the ad hoc housing, 10 of those people. You know, sat through 50, you know, almost 50 hours of meetings are not elected officials. They were just regular citizens that, you know, put up their hand and said they'd be willing to help with this really, really difficult process under the leadership. I have to absolutely give a shout out to Jocelyn for managing that process really, really well. So thank you to all of you. At the start of the process, Laura, our planning director described it as creating a layer cake. And this group did just that stacking and sometimes restacking the layers and switching up the recipe as needed based on community input along the way. And to continue the metaphor, input from the most recent planning commi- commission meeting may be the icing on the cake. The process has been iterative and collaborative, often taking two steps forward and one step back with intense debates and disagreements and trade offs. I applaud also all of our neighbors that have stayed engaged then on all these calls and especially those of you who have shared your input in constructive, positive and respectful ways. Thank you, it has been a Herculean effort and has made a tremendous difference. Looking ahead, I want to underscore that what we're voting on tonight is it's still a draft in bold. Our planning director anticipates that at least one anticipates at least one round of feedback from HCD, which will require refinements. We're also looking forward, as had been said several times tonight and throughout the last, you know, year for the wildfire maps from Woodside Fire Protection District, which may also require refinements. The final draft will likely be voted on by the council, including any new council members in January of 2023. Even then, the council reserves the right to update the housing element at any time after certification. If a new site not previously considered emerges or if the updated fire map reveals new hazards associated with the selected sites. So that's the process. In terms of the content throughout this process, we've heard consensus in 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 my summary around six key priorities. And just at a high level, I'm going to share these because I think these are kind of the pillars that shaped where we ended up in terms of the the housing inventory. As we've heard, safety was number one, safety, the number one priority, fire and seismic, which is why staff started with the constraints map as the first step in the process back in January and February. Constraints were based on the evacuation best practices, input from wildfire experts, Woodside Fire Protection District, etc. Laura has stated many times, the town will also reevaluate, as I just said, the sites inventory as soon as the new maps are available. The second, and again, these, the second priority that came up was, and we saw this a lot during the pivot stage, is dispersment and equity. The notion that no one area should shoulder an inequitable share of the development. Third, no involuntary rezoning of private residential properties. Again, this came up during the pivot stage of the process. Four, retain existing local commercial businesses. This was strongly voiced by a host of different people in the community, both business owners and community owners, that there was not no interest to rezone our local businesses, particularly those at Alpine and Portola and the Village Square. You know, tonight we're hearing from another local business in terms of Glen Oaks. And so I look forward to that part of the discussion as I think that that site should have been included as one of our local commercial businesses. Number five, reconsider town properties. So there was, you know, an exhaustive process in 2019 by the ad hoc committee on town owned properties. That list was reevaluated and reassessed. There was strong support for from the community for asking the committee to look at town owned properties. And then, of course, protecting the scenic corridor corridors and the principles of the general plan. So those six items, I think, were the guiding principles that led to where we landed in terms of the the sites inventory. And so just in summary, I I just want to underscore that I believe the the ad hoc housing element committee and the planning commission have done their very most earnest job threading this very difficult needle to propose a a plan based on these priorities. So those are my high level remarks. Thank you.
You muted Greg.
Go ahead, John.
Okay, I I'd like to make a a general statement as well, so to start with. First, I want to start talking about a little bit about motivation. So there's been a recurring suggestion that this council is acting out of fear of the state, the big, big mean state. But really, the the reason we're acting is that it's the right thing to do. And knowing that every nearly every community in California has failed to come up to come to grips with the housing crisis. The state really had to act. And now, in spite of our our somewhat fanciful idea of Portola Valley as an isolated place, we're really part of the state and we have to have an obligation to participate in the solution. So we're certainly a talented community that might have been able to do our part independently, but we didn't. And we haven't, and here we are now acting as part of the greater community of the state of California. So fortunately, I think that this is a there that there's a really big upside to this. And that is that we we have a tendency to to focus on the natural beauty, amazing natural beauty here in town, which can sort of diminish the fact that we're first and foremost a community of people. Years ago, way back when, before the town was formed and and well into the town's youth, we were economically a far more diverse community. There were many teachers, blue collar workers, retirees, as well as more more well off people who had their families here. Made their homes all over the all over the whole range of the town. The so it I feel that it'll be to our great advantage as a community, as a town, to be able to welcome people from some of these other stratas of society back into the community again. The general plan speaks very clearly to the to the desirability of making this a family family friendly place. And in 1964, that wasn't very hard to do because we were so far in the boonies, nobody wanted to live here. And we really, really, the property was about the cheapest place you could buy out here. So to me, it seems that making a modest change to the general plan now to once again make room for families who can't afford a large single family home in today will make our community that much stronger. But that's all I need to say to start with.
Thanks, John, Jeff.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so Sarah laid this out really well, that the housing element committee spent a year on this process, on every aspect of it. Listen to a lot of public input and really, you know, bent over backwards to accommodate some of that input. I mean, staff spent, you know, six weeks in in February and March, literally retooling the entire plan to accommodate some some very, very outspoken public comment. To be blunt about it, staff and the committee worked their asses off to make this the best housing element we can have. I am proud of it. I do appreciate the comments from the outside that that we've actually put together something that is 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 a good plan going forward. You know, before the housing element committee, the committee on town on property spent three years looking at every site in town that we owned, looking for potential sites and, you know, they they identified sites, we know where everything is. After the three years, the town on property and the one year of the ad hoc housing element committee, there's 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 not a magic bullet out there. You know, I, yeah, we're open to new ideas, but the reality is, I just, I don't believe there's a Deus ex machina out there that's going to get us out of this without some difficult decisions. And that's what we're here to make. You know, 10 years ago, you know, Mary Ann, John and I were in the middle of what was my first housing scuffle in Portola Valley, the the attempted purchase of 900 Portola Road. You know, before that, we had the we, you know, the previous council, I wasn't on it, attempted to rezone property behind Roberts. That got overturned by a public referendum. Before that, the Blue Oaks, Blokes subdivision had two sites that were supposed to become eight moderate income units. Those were eventually, those were never built, obviously. All those projects were, you know, the same pattern happens over and over again. You 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 come up with an initiative locally, the neighbors object to it. You know, other people in town object to it, a few people weigh in positively on it. And at the end of the day, if you know, we're elected officials, if if we get 50 people adamantly opposed to something and five or 10 people tentatively supporting it, we're probably not going to do it. And every jurisdiction is like that. That happens all over the state and the result is we are very, very short of housing. It's, you know, it's 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 happened here, it's happened everywhere. And, you know, the legislature has made it clear that they consider this a crisis, they've made it a priority. And they've addressed it by basically integrating the process at every level from the statewide level to the regional level to the local level. And they're forcing us right now to go through this process with the entire town at one time. So you can't basically say, well, build it somewhere else. You can't, you know, you can't push the project away from you because you're pushing it to someone else and they're going to push back. And that's what we're going through again right now. And this housing element is basically a compromise between a whole bunch of difficult decisions. You know, it includes some upzoning of 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 properties and residential neighborhoods. It includes a lot of more ADUs and JADUs. It includes, it includes some open space and and nobody feels good about that. Again, it was a compromise, you know, that that was incorporated because the Nathurst neighborhood objected to having all the upzoning, all the high density put in their neighborhood. You it's it's we've made a series of compromises, it is, it's, you know, no one's going to go from this happy, but I hope everyone appreciates that everyone else is going home unhappy as well. That's what a compromise is. And that's what we have here. You know, we've been accused of of prioritizing housing over safety. The fact is, we are legally required to to play close pay close attention to both. You know, we live here too, our families live here, you know, I my my wife and children live here, of course, I care about safety. We are doing the best we can to address both our housing obligations and our safety obligations. It's complicated, it's it's messy, it's not going to, not everyone's going to agree with what we're doing. We're, you know, we're going to have to do the best job we can and make the best decisions we can. A few specific points, you know, the opt in upzoning was a response to, I believe, the survey where people said they wanted to see the development spread throughout town. The the by by allowing individual properties to opt in, we we were creating a situation where people could at their own choosing and and anywhere in town add add some density, not a lot, but some density. And we get more housing spread out throughout town. That was that was the impetus behind that. Personally, I still think it's a reasonable thing to look at. I don't think it's going to be a huge, I don't think we're going to get a lot of responses to it the same way. I don't think we're going to get a lot of SB nine lot splits. It gives us some flexibility above and beyond SB nine, both for the homeowner and for us in terms of review. I still, I still, I still generally support it. You know, we've talked about the buffer. You know, one of the powerful things about this process is that it's making us address the entire question of housing at the same time. And like I said, this is a compromise, everyone is going to walk away unhappy about something. If we start, the the buffer is there so that we can do it all at once and not get get not get not have to go back and redo this in two years. Because if we have to go re, we'll go back and redo something in two years, we don't have that same, you know, somebody is going to basically feel like they're getting screwed because they're local, they're they're being asked to pay for a shortcoming of the original plan. So, you know, I I I think the buffer where it is at 20% or approximately 20% is reasonable and I I feel strongly that buffer should be there because I want to make sure that we actually get a plan that's going to work for the entire eight years. The Ford Field project again was added in response to the the concerns about all the all of the upzoning in one area. You know, we're a small community. We only have so many places that we can safely put a high density development. And the state is, the state is the state is pushing communities like ours to do multi-family high density development. They've made it very clear, they want to see multi-family development in communities like ours. It's going to be very, very hard to make this work without some high density housing. You know, between the between the couple of properties in Nathurst and Ford Field, we've got a couple of what I think are good solutions to this. You know, no one, you know, no one feels good about taking open space and turning it to housing. But, you know, this is property that we own that is there to be used for the town's purposes. You know, and and, you know, you know, Bill Lane and Tom Ford, Tom Ford, no, Tom Ford. You know, they they sorry, they they cared a lot about open space, but they also cared about the town and its people. And I I I will not speak for them, but I like to think they would understand that we are responding to the realities of the current situation. And the town was founded on the ethos of preserving open space and that is a noble goal. But, you know, housing changes lives. You know, I I I was a, I was a rich kid, I lived a very privileged life, I've never worried about a roof over my head or or my next meal. I've met lots of people who have, and it is a very draining thing to live with. You know, the stories you hear from people are 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 difficult. You know, the You know, the stories you hear from people are difficult, you know, the science behind this. I did it years ago, did a PhD in an obscure field called epigenetics and what we know about, you know, economic insecurities, it's incredibly stressful. People with economic insecurity live shorter, less healthy, lower quality lives. Their DNA is modified and is passed on to their children. Their children are more likely to be, to have physical and mental defects. It's, it's, it's a cycle. It's not a lot of housing we're talking about, but it will change people's lives and it will save people's lives. And as noble as some of our other founding principles are, I believe that providing housing, this is also a noble goal. So again, it is not perfect. It's not something a lot of people are, it's not going to be popular. I understand that, but it's also, I think, an amazing effort by a lot of people to respond to both the state mandate and, and as John pointed out, a moral obligation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Mary Ann?
What he said, plus I have my own thoughts. I actually think this document is groundbreaking, coming from a small, very affluent community that's majority white with no history of building affordable housing and tremendous geologic and environmental constraints. So not only did we create a plan that follows the law, it also takes seriously the affirmatively furthering fair housing piece of the law by removing the barriers for people of lesser means, other cultures, other races, other genders, and all the protected classes to live here. In essence, we proved that we are an inclusive, welcoming community. As I think many of you know, I've worked as an advocate for affordable housing for more than a decade, heartbroken each time our efforts have been forwarded when a neighborhood rose up in protest. I have sat on county boards and task forces about housing. I have attended hours and hours of workshops and seminars and conferences to learn the nuts and bolts of affordable housing, how it is financed, who lives there, what it looks like, essentially how you build it and also what our neighbors have been doing, what they have been building up and down the peninsula. This has informed my perspective and made me a believer that one day we could do it here too. And I remember having those conversations with Jeremy. I just never believed that it would happen in twenty twenty two when I was still on the council. This council's commitment to planning for a more diverse population to create a more inclusive community have brought us to this point and I am so grateful to the Ad Hoc Housing Committee who did all the heavy lifting the last ten months, to our planning staff, especially Laura, to Jeremy and to my colleagues for taking an impossible task and making it possible. So I challenge all of you out there who are despairing over what you perceive you will lose and consider what you will gain. Many new community members, old and young, who come from different places with their own unique stories, ready to share those stories with you on a walk up the creek on Eagle Trail. We, the Portola Valley community, have learned to live with earthquakes while welcoming large housing tracts of people. And John can attest to this because he was a little boy riding his bicycle through the lands before they became the ranch, right? In Westridge and other housing tracts. We rebuilt the town center here on this beautiful campus and daylighted the creek in the face of great public opposition. We will learn to live with wildfire and we will learn to add homes and people in places where there previously were no homes and no people, just as we did again when John was a boy. We have done it before and we will do it again because that is who we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. I would just add to that, you know, I think we're in a difficult situation because of the lack of affordable housing that has been built in Portola Valley and elsewhere across the state over the last fifty years since the Rena process began. We're coming into the sixth cycle now and the state is finally realizing that its original intention with Rena hasn't come to fruition because towns have constantly tried to punt on actually doing anything other than single family zoning in towns like Portola Valley. You know, if fifty years ago, somewhere in town had, you know, some neighborhood had allowed duplexes or quads. Twenty-five years ago, we allowed sixplexes and some eights. Then it would be a very different discussion now about having some of those sites going to ten or twenty units per acre. The fact is, we only have single family zoning and other than, you know, old specific instances like Sequoia's and the Priory throughout town and that really means that as, as Mary Ann said, any project that comes along, neighbors say, well, this is a change. We don't want it. And it ends up not coming to fruition. So the state has, you know, changed the rules underneath us and said, you can't say no anymore. You have to have the tough conversation that Jeff is describing. You have to make those trade offs and you have to find locations for this housing to go somewhere in your community. We've gone through for the last year plus the most, I think, public involvement process that exists in the county and maybe even the whole Bay Area or the state in terms of the number of meetings, the outreach to the public, the number of members of the public have come to the meetings who provided their input, whose input has been critical to the changes and directions that have gone into building this plan. The amount of staff work and consultant time and thoughtful ways of being creative to consider what the values of Portola Valley are and incorporate those into the plan, not just to try and do some cookie cutter approach that, you know, might be great in Redwood City, but really just doesn't work in Portola Valley. You know, the state is forcing us to do this because we haven't done it for the last fifty years. And given that the state is forcing us to do it, I'm very proud of the process that we've all gone through together to get to where we are. It's not a perfect plan. I don't think there is a perfect plan that would make everybody happy. But I think it's the least bad plan that we could possibly come up with or very close to it. I think as we go through the individual elements and some of the staff questions, we'll probably, you know, have some comments on specific things that we might prefer to see tweaked one way or another. But the fact that what we're talking about at this stage is tweaks and not complete overhauls in order to get something that, you know, we think is viable for the town of Portola Valley and that could be accepted by the state speaks to the process that I think we set in motion over a year ago to really achieve a result that I think no other town that I know of in the Bay Area is, is able to be at at this point in time. So we are on still a timeline where I think we can have a certified housing element by the deadline. We can make all the changes that we need to make by that time. And then we can have, you know, a successful implementation of that without risk to us of further negative consequences from the state during that eight-year cycle. So I'm really proud of the work that's gone into this from everybody who's touched it, been involved with it, showed up at the meetings, spoken, sent letters, participated in committees and all the rest of it. The, the, the effort and the dedication really shows through in the, in the work product. And I think I'm looking forward to the rest of the discussion tonight to see where we end up going. So with that, Laura, maybe it might be best for you to guide us through the elements where, I mean, I would just be going through your staff report kind of paragraph by paragraph, but you may be better able to express the questions than me just reading what your report says. So do you want to guide us through the next part of going through chunk by chunk?
I'd be happy to. There's questions that are prepared in the memo. Those were to kind of get you thinking. But based on how some of this conversation has gone, those might not be the most important questions. They may still be. But the key topic areas are the opt-in rezoning program, the level of the buffer, the level of the ADU production, how many ADUs we're counting, the sunrise program and included in that is the gateway concept. And then the Glen Oaks site. So those are the main topic areas. And so I don't know if it makes sense from the feedback we've heard so far. I don't know if people want to start on ADUs because that might be easier or if people want to, you know, hit one of the big ones like the gateway and the Ford Field. Open space discussion.
Let me first ask council members if there's anything that Laura didn't list that is an item we want to delve in on. I think that those were the items that I had that I wanted to discuss. If there's anything anybody else had to add to that list, let us know now. Nope. All good. Okay. Why don't we, I think that all of those items you mentioned are to some degree in order in the packet, Laura. And why don't we just go through the order that they're in in the packet? Because then we just have to scroll in one direction through the giant PDF file. We don't have to jump back and forth.
Okay, great. Then here's how I would summarize. First is the opt-in rezoning program. So I think the key questions are, do you wish to include the opt-in rezoning program? If you wish to include it, would you like to see further limitations on it? What kinds of limitations? If you don't wish to include it, is SB nine an appropriate substitute in the list? Or do you have some other substitute in mind if you don't want to include it? So I think those are the key questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any thoughts on this? I do. If anybody else does, John?
Yeah, I would like to say that I really like the idea of a program that we've designed ourselves and that as opposed to the SB nine use. I think it maybe needs a little more scrutiny and probably needs some additional restrictions to make it a little more secure. But I think it's worth pursuing. It has the, it gives the opportunity for real family compounds for co-op housing and that kind of, which I think is is becoming more and more popular in our society right now as people go back to people are living, living, going back home and living with extended families to a much greater extent than they have in many, many years. And so I think, I, I think we need to pursue it and see if we can get it to a point where we're most satisfied with the outlook.
Thanks, Sarah.
So I personally like the opt-in. I, for all the reasons that John just said, you know, I think it provides this missing middle. It gives us a unique type of housing that we don't have in Portola Valley. Does it in a, in a way that enables objective standards relative to SB nine? And it is really, really effective in terms of dispersment, which was, you know, a big priority. However, at the end of the day, for me, I, I feel like throughout the process, there's been an enormous amount of pushback about the impact to neighborhoods and I'm just concerned about kind of the random nature of this as it rolls out. You really won't know, you know, where these developments might happen. And just based on the, the, the experience that we had going through, you know, the opt-in, that kind of initial stab at it. I think it just was really upsetting for the, you know, all those different neighborhoods. And I, I guess I just, although I think it, in the end, it provides, you know, a better, you know, checklist and local control. At the end of the day, I, I kind of am citing on, on going with the SB nine approach because it already exists. And I just am super concerned about this continued impact to neighborhoods and everything that's been said about the prisoner's dilemma. Yeah. So that's where I am on that one.
Okay. Mary Ann?
I think that the opt-in program is a misunderstood stepchild. I think it's uniquely suited to Portola Valley because we have an aging population. And I remember at those housing conversation meetings we did, I don't know when that was, two thousand seventeen, maybe sixteen. There were comments saying people wanted to age in place. They wanted to have, you know, four units on a property for four couples or four singles and also a caregiver. And this is perfect for that. There are, we all have kids and kids can't afford, most kids can't afford to buy house unless they somehow fall into the high income earners, some do, or have parents who can help them. And this way, kids like, for instance, John's daughter and her wife can live at home with the aging parents. I also, but I also believe it needs guardrails, that it should be owner occupied. We should limit the projects that we will accept within the eight-year period, that there would be a call for projects, there would be criteria. And there, I don't know who would make the decision as to what's, who has chosen perhaps staff, planning commission, a council member. I think it has real possibility and people would love it once they understood it. Thanks.
Jeff?
Yeah, I agree. I think there's a, I think it gets you something that SB nine doesn't get to in terms of an integrated approach to a lot. I mean, SB nine is just you split a lot in half. You can put two things, two, you know, a house and an ADU on each of the two lots. I, I think it, I was approached by someone who, he and his wife and two other couples, they know, want to basically create a little compound and then age in place together. It's, I, I don't think it'll be a really widespread thing and I absolutely agree. We should have a lot of guardrails and it shouldn't, it should not be a huge part of the solution. I still think it's a, it's a good program. I still think it spreads the housing out. Yeah, it's a little bit unpredictable where it's going to go, but you know, it's also a market driven solution. I mean, we talk, people are asking us to do things where people are voluntarily doing things and we're getting uses that we wouldn't have seen otherwise. I, I, you know, I, I don't mean to make light of the concerns that have been raised about it, but I still think it's, it's actually, I think it's an interesting program. If it's done thoughtfully, I do absolutely agree that there are, you know, we should, there should be some very high bars and that, you know, there's, we should limit how many of these that we actually expect to see.
Thanks. Yeah, I, you know, I think about this in terms of what twelve units produced from an opt-in approach means. That means six duplexes spread throughout the town or three quads. So, you know, with guardrails in place to limit the toll number, to limit the toll number of units per site, not just, you know, to set a, set a per acre density, but say per lot maximum number of units. You know, we could say it's no more than two units and at most six of them. That's six duplexes in town. I think that mitigates a lot of the neighborhood character changing risks, Sarah, that I think you're concerned about if we, if we put the right guardrails in place. I just don't see how having a duplex, you know, of two, three thousand square foot units next door to you is gonna dramatically change the neighborhood over having one six thousand square foot house, single family house. It'll change it a little bit, but I don't think it's going to be a catastrophic change that destroys the character of Portola Valley or any neighborhood in town. So I think we need to be thoughtful about what those guardrails are. But I think I greatly prefer the opt-in approach to, as I think it actually arose out of the proposal to potentially upzone existing residential properties in Nathorres. I think it was some of the Nathorres residents who said, we don't want to be forced into something. We, how about an opt-in approach? And then it kind of went, went from there. And I, I like that approach. I like that approach of letting people And I, I, I like that approach. I like that approach of letting people choose and, and giving optionality. Rather than forcing something which might be the alternative. And as has been pointed out, it's a, it's a small number of units in the overall scheme of this plan. It's six duplexes townwide gets us twelve units. So it's, it's. We certainly need to figure out what the right guardrails are. I think capping the total number during the planning period would be appropriate. I think it's also a better alternative to SB nine, because I think with SB nine, if we, you know, right now, frankly. I don't expect that we will ever see an SB nine project in Portal Valley with our current SB nine ordinance. I think it's just, I'm, I'm economic. You can't build two or even four eight hundred square foot houses in Portal Valley and make your money back from property purchase to buy the land. So subdividing and building four eight hundred square foot buildings, which is all our current ordinance allows you to do under SB nine. Nobody's going to do that. If we were to liberalize the SB nine rules to enable it to be economic for some people to do it. We wouldn't be able to cap it to be, say, only so only six lots in town. It would be any lot in town where it's economically viable and then I think you really could get into. Dramatic changes in certain neighborhoods that, you know, we can't even predict because we don't know where people are going to want to do it. I think with the right guardrails and opt-in approach would be a much better solution to get us those units.
Can I ask a question, Laura? Is, I thought it was written as four units currently.
It's written as four units per acre currently.
But, but with potential cap, I mean, we can add other restrictions on that, right? We could say on any lot regardless of the size, no more than four total. Or no more than three total or whatever we want to set the limit at, we could do that. Because we're talking about the above market rate, right? So the, the units per acre. Doesn't really matter that much as long as it allows the units to be produced. It's not like the very low income ones where they have to be a certain density, otherwise you don't get the Mullen default benefit thing.
Yeah, I think there's a little bit in the balance of making it, as long as it's a little bit more attractive than SB nine, right? And makes more sense and provides the option for different housing types because that was part of the goal. As long as it still preserves some of that of different housing types, then I think any, any number cap that still does that. You could impose.
So I, you know, I obviously am in the minority here and I, I want to just. Reiterate that, that I agree with all of you guys personally. I think this is a great solution for all the reasons that've been said. I do, just because you guys all haven't had the benefit of having been through the process, there was extreme pushback. And the only, you know, maybe five days that we had a couple of locations on the list. Extreme pushback. So my big concern is for our community and that basically this is just going to be. A slowly taking off the Band-Aid of disruption of that type, like little mini Nat Horse pushbacks along the way. And that's what I'm super sensitive to. And so I just, just for the record and for awareness for those of you who, who weren't in the weeds there, wanted to make sure.
I certainly heard a lot of that, Sarah, and, and a lot of it to my mind was about, you know, higher densities. And suddenly having six or eight units on a lot. In a neighborhood that had been single-family housing. And so that's why I think the guardrail portion is important because. You know, when I, when I've talked to people about it who've expressed concerns about changing neighborhoods. And I talked about it in terms of duplexes or, you know, triplexes as opposed to. Eight units on a lot or ten units on a lot. People have said, oh yeah, that's a lot less of a change. And so I, I think if we can craft it in such a way that it's not a huge change. From what's already allowed. In terms of the intensity of the use and how many car trips in and out there are going to be and so on, that it, it. Could be, you know, less anxiety and do a thing.
Yeah, and I agree. I mean, certainly duplexes is, is, you know, it's practically the equivalent of having an ADU and having a renter, right?
Yeah, just with a bigger square footage limit.
So that, you know, that hadn't been discussed. The other reason why I like adding it back is because we'll get to it. But, you know, I'm really focused on Glen Oaks and I feel like the more inventory we add, these would be above mod. Which is a lot of where Glen Oaks is right now and I'm, I'm hoping by the time we get to that line item. Maybe we'll have added some things back in that category so that we can alleviate some of the density at Glen Oaks.
Yeah, I, I also have my own Glen Oaks to see if we can reduce the number of units there because if we can get it down low enough, then. It could be done potentially without disrupting the, the existing facility.
Exactly.
So. Would, would summarizing what I think I've heard is that generally it sounds like we, we're in favor of the opt-in approach with guardrails. We'll need to think through what those guardrails are. That I'm assuming Laura doesn't need to be in the draft. We can leave it sort of as the draft is now. Which more or less says we'll figure out the details and we can get back to HD in the final revision with what we actually mean by opt-in.
We will need to change it because right now we've got four units per acre, which implies it could be higher. Than the numbers you're talking about right now. And so we would need to change the description of it. And so I think I'm hearing certainly consensus around duplex. I think there was kind of getting to be consensus around kind of cottages. Or is there also consensus around things that still look like a single-family home? So more units within the same kind of building envelope as a single-family home or does that feel different?
What, I, I think where I, I started getting uncomfortable is anything more than four per lot. Four is already, you know, at the upper end, but if there's, you know, the appropriate discretionary view and so on on it, then. You can make sure that it's not for inappropriate units per lot. But, you know, whether those are attached and it's a traditional quad or whether they're for separate cottages. As some of your drawings had, I don't think that there's that much of a difference there.
Weren't you just saying duplexes, which would be two?
Yeah, or quads, which would be, yeah, quads, you would, you would need three quads townwide to achieve twelve units. Or six duplexes, but I don't, I, I don't see a huge problem with quads. They're a little more problematic than duplexes potentially, but I don't think dramatically so.
Are, are you thinking of something like a townhouse? Like, are you like, like four, like a row of four townhouses or? I'm just trying to think, I tried to visualize what you're actually saying when you say.
Yeah, four townhouses or four cottages like Laura had on her drawing or.
Okay.
I, four, four units attached or detached on a lot and it would depend on the lot, you know, what, what would actually pass design review.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, the, the four per lot, it depends on the lot. I, on a larger lot, I could, I could, I could, I could picture a lot where I'd be comfortable with six. On, on a, you know, a two or a two acre lot. Or larger lot.
My concern is just really to, to make it more palatable and that given that we do a lot of these projects, I mean, you, you don't need. You, you don't need a lot of projects, right?
Yeah, that's fair. That's fair. Yeah, I've just, yeah.
To get to the twelve that, that's on, that's kind of the target here.
Fair enough.
So if there's at least kind of general consensus around about this size, we can craft it. So that we can describe, I think, what, what you're talking about and then we can flesh out the details later. So I think we'll have enough to create a program for the housing element from what you're saying.
Is that, I haven't heard from Mary Ann and John as far as consensus. Does, does that make sense to you guys?
I think that, that, that size limitation makes sense, yeah.
Laura, do you think it'll still fly if it's less than four units an acre?
I think that having four units per site with local standards. Goes in the direction of what state law has been trying to do. And I think, you know, and it depends on your perspective. You know, my perspective is that it's the town going in a new direction and that's what we would try to explain to HCD. That this is trying something out, still having local setbacks and local design so that we can see how it works. And then the community can decide whether that something should be expanded or not. But I mean, I think there's a good narrative that could be put around it.
Okay.
I have one question. Why, if, if. Would you guys consider just saying duplexes instead of up to four?